They got some good deals. They got some good deals now.
Got me a fighting bull.
Thank you.
Fighting bull thing. Uh, that covers your belly. I really feel like that's the best one. Get a midget in my dog and see if he wants to go down a path.
No, that's what I, that's what I always want. I always get some frigging guns, you know?
What's Petey doing? You got your atomic time?
Gotta be down low, that's right.
Atomic time?
Yeah. It's synchronized with Greenwich.
Yeah.
International.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for joining us for today's meeting of the Tulare County Board of Supervisors. It's great to see such a nice turnout today. I know why you're all here, and we congratulate you in advance for being recognized for your service. At this time, we are going to stand for the pledge of allegiance that will be followed by a moment of silence. We will be led today by Supervisor Michael T. Ennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unbound, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, maybe see it.
Right, item number one on today's agenda is Board of Supervisors Matters, and I'm going to start with Supervisor Shucklian.
I knew you were gonna say that.
Yeah, I knew you were ready, that's why I did pick you.
I knew I was looking at my phone to see what was going on. Well, I guess the biggest thing is, last Monday, I was invited to the Fresno Amtrak station and for Operation Lifesaver, which is a coordination between the San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority, which I'm a member of, which manages the San Joaquin Amtrak, also through the Burlington Northern, and basically what it was, it was an opportunity, we took a train ride through Fresno, which was very exciting, just north of Fresno, but along the crossings there, we had the Amtrak Police, the BNSF Police, CHP in Fresno, and it was an opportunity to bring awareness to folks about rail safety. Every three hours, a vehicle or a person is hit by a train, and so they were there giving warnings and in some instances giving citations to folks to... So we got to see it behind the scenes. I got to ride in the locomotive, and about fifty feet and fifty yards in front of us, a gentleman picked up his bike and just walked it right across the tracks, and the engineer said, "That's not much." He sees a lot more than that. People put refrigerators on the tracks, shopping carts, box springs, and a lot of times they do this to take a YouTube video, but it's not very safe. So that was a nice event that I went to, that I was invited to. And the only other thing I have is, does anybody have a pen? Because I gotta get my taxes done here by midnight. So if I can borrow a pen during the meeting, I'd appreciate it. Just a reminder.
I'll have one in my pocket.
Thanks for the friendly reminder, and I have no doubt that you will fill yours out with a pen, Supervisor Shucklian.
Oh yeah, no pencils.
I will now look over to Supervisor Crocker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week, it was great to meet with the Public Defender's Office and the District Attorney's Office. I'm not really sure why I was with both of them last week. One's going to prosecute me, the other's gonna defend me maybe in the near future. But it was, I just, happy Easter to everyone. Yesterday, or Sunday, I don't know what day of the week it is. It was a great day, and it was a great time to spend with my family and friends, and I'm sure many of you also did the same. And that was just a special time of the year that I really enjoy. Tonight, we're having...
Did you get to go on an Easter egg hunt?
I didn't, you know, but I miss that, you know?
I was just saying, because you are the youngest on the board.
That's right. Maybe we should institute that for next year.
We could do one out back before, yes.
That's right, you know? The rotten eggs for me, that's right. Tonight is the first annual Friant Water Authority Annual Meeting in Tulare at the Heritage Complex there at the Farm Show, and I'm looking forward to attending that and seeing what's going on with all of our Friant water users that encompass most of the, or all of the east side. And so that's gonna be great. Supervisor Shucklian and I are attending our last session of the new Supervisors Institute that CSAC is putting on, and this is our third or fourth session that we've attended, and, you know, really the idea with that is to get other supervisors who have been in the office for a little bit longer than the few months that we have, and to give their perspective, as well as staff members from different counties throughout the state that kind of give their perspective of how they work on the issues that many of us throughout the 58 counties are facing on a regular basis. And so I'm expecting that we're going to have a packed schedule. This Saturday, Farmersville, we're having the grand opening of the library. And so that's going to be a very exciting thing that we have this Saturday, and I'm looking forward to attending that and seeing what a great thing that that is for the community. And lastly, I'll just say that some of the people, the staff in the office, thought that I almost might have gotten arrested last week because I was possibly stalking the Interior Secretary. Unfortunately, I didn't get a meeting with them, but Mario Santoyo and I, we did hang out in the Doubletree Lobby in Fresno for a few hours waiting for him.
Actually, I heard it was at the bar.
Potato, potato.
And if the DA's office needs another investigator, this guy was on the phone calling every restaurant asking if their back room was open or who it was reserved for, so...
Did I find out, though? I found out they were, he wasn't at any of them.
I know. Maybe he's not so good.
I'm fighting for water, that's the point. So the fight continues, and unfortunately, I didn't meet with them, but I'm not stopping.
Well, after moving on from stalker Crocker, we move over to Supervisor Mike Ennis for Board of Supervisors.
Yeah, I couldn't last.
Look, I gotta sit next to the guy. It was bourbon and branch. Anyway, yesterday, we had our TCAG meeting, and we did find out we've got a transportation bill that's been passed, and hopefully, we'll be getting some money to keep widening 99. We're hopefully gonna get 99 highway widened all the way to Tulare. I think there was $13 million put in there for STIP projects. Also, Tulare County got $151,000 for road maintenance. So that's county road maintenance, and of course, your cities all got money. The big ones would be Porterville, Tulare, and Visaya. Porterville got 13.75, Tulare got 14.53, and Visaya got 29.80. But all the cities got some money, so this is something to look forward to. I'm not real happy with the bill they passed that's gonna raise our fuel prices and our registration fees on our vehicles. I wasn't very happy with that at all, but we'll see how it shakes out, and hopefully, that money will stay in the robe fund and be for roads and not be put in the general fund, so that's what we're hoping for. This Thursday, I'll be attending the Ag Luncheon in Porterville at the Memorial Building, and then after that, I've got an East Tulie Groundwater Management Meeting at City Hall in Porterville. Saturday night, I'll be going up to Fresno. My granddaughter Emily is in the running for a Star Farmer, and so she's under the farming division. She lives over in the King City area, so we'll be going up there to see how she does on that. So that's all I have. And yesterday was my birthday, so...
Happy birthday!
At my age, you're just glad to see him.
That's true. Thanks for admitting you were old, I didn't mean to. Supervisor Worthley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the last Thursday, before the Thursday, I mean, two Thursdays ago, I was at the Executive Committee Retreat that was held in Southern California. Again, a big topic up there was state legislation and state budget. A big concern, of course, is Health Human Services and how that's gonna shake out in terms of the cost back to the counties. Last week was a busy week. We had an ad hoc committee, a finance committee, the chairman chaired, and we had a LAFCO meeting. But what was really busy was, my wife was off for the week, so she thought I should be off for the week. We had a bunch of people coming over, so I'm glad to be back. I can rest a little bit now because I was really tired out from all that. And then yesterday, I told the chairman I was not gonna be here today because I was scheduled, we were scheduled, Mario Santoya and some of the folks on the JPA for Temperance Flat were gonna meet with Senator Feinstein in San Francisco. That meeting was, as of Friday, was taken off calendar. As a consequence of that, yesterday, I was able to meet with John Chang in Fresno. He's running for governor of California. He's our current treasurer, I believe, for the state. He's had all of the financial offices in the state, and he's a very, very sharp individual. So of course, we were there talking about the issues of our county, about water and so forth. I wanted to educate him on that. This is, I've got a few more things going this week. On Thursday, Air Board Meeting in Fresno, Tulare, Northern Tulare County Leadership in the afternoon, and then the East Kings River GSA, so it's gonna be a busy day. So a lot going on, and glad to have all of you here this morning. It's always a great, great day to be able to celebrate your accomplishments. Thank you.
All right, thank you Supervisor. A few things that I wanted to highlight today. This afternoon, the Space Planning Ad Hoc Committee will be meeting, and again, I think that the ad hoc committee's structure of this Board of Supervisors has been a wonderful thing, whether it's been the TOMF facility, the Transit Operations Maintenance Facility, or the Property and Evidence Facility in Tulare. This committee has done a great job in helping to bring costs to a more realistic level before they are considered by this board in full for adoptions, and so I think we've saved the county a good portion of money by that process. Today is Leadership Tulare City-County Day. They've worked very hard to put together a productive day for the participants in the Leadership Tulare Program, learning a lot about both city and county functions. I appreciate the organizer of the day for them, Jason Bender. He's spent a lot of time working with myself and with county staff to put together a productive day. I appreciate our staff who have volunteered to present to the group, and I also appreciate all of the participants in the program who are strengthening Tulare by learning more about the different levels of government and how they can improve our city. Also, speaking of the city of Tulare, Rosa's Trattoria, I'm not Italian, so I don't think anybody else on this board is either. Trattoria, Trattoria, is having a ribbon cutting and grand opening in downtown Tulare at the old V's Restaurant. That is Wednesday, April 19th at 3:00 PM. And the reason I bring that up is, anyone who's from Tulare knows that Tulare's downtown has really been looking for that real anchor in the downtown to help get growth started and encourage development in the downtown. And I think that Rosa's coming down there and opening the restaurant is gonna be a good start towards that end, so I sure appreciate them. And the food's excellent, too, I ate there last week. And then lastly, the Walking Works Challenge kicks off next week for county employees. Hopefully, everybody knows about that. Hopefully, everybody has signed up for that. We have a lot of county employees here today. That's a great week. It's wonderful to get out and track the number of steps that you are walking each and every day. One thing about losing Supervisor Ashida, he never walked. He actually put the pedometer on his dog. And so it's gonna be, it's gonna be interesting having some more willing participants, hopefully, this year on the board. We can get a higher participation rate of human beings and actually see how we do competing against Fresno County. It's really an effort to encourage overall health and well-being and hopefully reduce the claims in our health insurance arena, and everybody knows that that's getting more and more expensive each and every year, so...
Can I get another one of these? I have two dogs at home.
Actually, you can take another one and walk a lot of steps because I probably have four of these at home that I use them, too. So anyways, that's all that I had for Board of Supervisors Matters, and we will now move on to item number two on our agenda today. That is a request to adopt a resolution proclaiming April 18th, 2017 as Library Literacy Day in Tulare County. I will turn the mic over right now to our librarian, Darla.
Good morning, Chairman Vanderpool and the Board of Supervisors. And Mike, Deanna. I'm recovering from bronchitis, so I'm gonna apologize for my voice. We are here for actually two reasons. First, to adopt the resolution proclaiming April 18th, 2017 as Library Literacy Day in Tulare County. We are a program in the library, including our Library Literacy Program as well as our library. We are here to promote literacy every, each and every day. And I'm gonna keep this really brief because of my bronchitis and also because we're here to recognize these people, and it's really their day. I think if we could go ahead and just go straight to the resolution for this, and then we'll move to the next item. Normally, I would give a nice little speech, but I don't think you wanna hear me like this.
All right, well, I will gladly do that and present the proclamation right now, and you can come up and join me here in the well. Just don't stand too close because I do have two young kids, and I don't wanna bring bronchitis home with them. But if you would like to bring up some of your adult readers as well to join us, did you bring any with you today?
We didn't bring anybody this year because just the timing.
Okay.
And we'll sort of, I'll address that a little bit when we talk about our library board.
Okay, great, well, if you wanna join me at the other podium, I'll present this to you. Oh yeah, great. All right, it's my pleasure to present this proclamation proclaiming Tuesday, April 18th, 2017 as Library Literacy Day in Tulare County. Whereas Tulare County libraries welcome all to transform by providing learning opportunities for the digital age for everyone who seeks information, education, and access. And whereas the Tulare County Public Library celebrates 107 years of service, just one year short of Supervisor Mike Ennis and his life, sorry, and the Read to Succeed Library Literacy Program celebrates 17 years in partnering with libraries, literacy programs, and other organizations to transform the lives of Tulare County residents. And whereas local literacy and library volunteers strive to assist others, tutor learners to read, enhance their reading and life skills, and help our libraries provide a wealth of services and programs, provide from all areas of the county, both urban and rural, form an enthusiastic group, or I'm sorry, people from all areas, form an enthusiastic group of library patrons and learners. And whereas the Library and Literacy Program exemplify that access to information and education resources, including one-on-one tutoring, makes a real difference in the overall success of all learners, especially those learning to read. And whereas the Tulare County Library and Literacy Program has numerous partners to ensure leverage of resources and services through support and funds from the County of Tulare, California State Library, Tulare County Health and Human Services, and contributions from numerous community groups and agencies that ensure continued service and assists the community's efforts to address the learning and literacy needs in the county. And whereas the County of Tulare is pleased with the success of the Library and Read to Succeed Program and publicly acknowledges the transformational efforts of staff, volunteers, learners, and patrons in their future endeavors. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Tulare County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim Tuesday, April 18th, 2017 as Library Literacy Day in Tulare County, and welcome all to visit their neighboring library to take advantage of the wonderful resources and to experience how libraries can transform. This proclamation is dated April 18th, 2017, and is signed by Kyler Crocker, Pete Vanderpool, Amy Shucklian, Steve Worthley, and Mike Ennis. Congratulations, and thank you for all that you do to help improve the lives and truly transform the lives of those who are learning the skills to maintain literacy or attain literacy. As we know, that is the key to better futures. So we're sure grateful for all that you are doing for the Tulare County Library, and thank you for bringing this forward.
That's part of being down there. Take a picture, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Sure appreciate it.
108. Congratulations.
Yeah, feels good, too.
I just wanna say Alex is one of our best tutors. He's also on our library board. And when we go to the next slide, which is about our board, actually, it's probably this one, our board presentation, it's our annual board presentation today. And Alex McDavid, who is one of our at-large members of our library advisory board, will be making the presentation, and as well as LA Gilson will also be here in support. I'm gonna let Alex come up here and give you a good overview of what we did last fiscal year in the library and talk about our board goals for the next year. Thank you.
So, I wanna begin. We have a wonderful library advisory board. I have six colleagues currently on the board. We're looking for three more. We do a variety of things. We meet on a monthly basis. Flip through some, there we go.
All the standards, yeah.
There we go. We've had great success getting Wi-Fi hotspots in at least 12 of our library branches so far. We've had some implementation of a career online high school program, and we've participated in a number of community events, including Youth Connect, Transforming Tulare Job Fair, Dia de los Niños, the fruit and veggie festivals, I like that, Red Ribbon Week and others. We have a new online language learner program called Pronunciator that I've used with one of my two Ts. We can go on, I think. We've been able to add a, had added a English, as a second, English speakers of other languages literacy program in Goshen, which has been great, and provided lunches with, through Food Link for over 1,200 children. Our summer reading program continues to be successful. Over 2,300 children and teens and adults who signed up for that, including a whole lot of county employees, which is great. The literacy program serves 889 learners and their families, including 316 adults receiving one-on-one tutoring, and 222 volunteers provide one-on-one literacy tutoring and many other services. It's one of my great pleasures to volunteer as an adult tutor, or a tutor for adults. I also work with the, what we call the Little Kid Book Club, which is a month-to-month program called ELF, Early Learning for Families, which is just a marvelous program with infants, toddlers, and preschoolers up to age five. That happens at the Literacy Center at the corner of Locust and Murray on the first Friday of the month, except in the summer. We have a large number of borrowers in this county, although we can always, we would always like to encourage more people to get library cards. If you don't have a library card, come get one. I remember getting my first one when I was probably four or five, although that was in a different county. Lots of books, lots of DVDs, lots of online resources available at all of our branches. We can go on, I think. We have, it was great to see Supervisor Worthley at the London Branch opening last fall. That was terrific, donated land and great community support. Wonderful turnout for the grand opening, and we look forward to having a similar one this coming Saturday in Farmersville at the corner of Avery and Ash. And so we look forward to having you there, too, Supervisor Crocker. I was a pleasure personally to attend the author event that the Friends of the Library put on with David Masamoto a few months ago, and he was kind to pose for selfies with the people that were buying his book and getting autographs. And he was, he did much more than just autograph his name. He added some very thoughtful personal comments, too, so... The board has revised and approved a library use policy, and we continue to work on connecting branches to a massive network that works with getting people in California connected with things all over the world. We can go on. We are looking to still fill three membership vacancies on the library advisory board, one in the greater Porterville area, District 5, and as well as two at-large members. So if anybody knows anybody that would be interested, it only requires a month-to-month meeting on the second Tuesday of the month at 2:00. We are also trying to go out to different branches. We were at, we've been, of course, had a meeting at the London Branch, the Exeter Branch just last week. We had, we met in Tulare. And I think we were at Lindsay, too, last year, possibly.
We didn't meet in Tulare.
Okay. And we're going to be doing that also in Farmersville and Pixley. I've also had the pleasure of visiting the Springville Library and the Three Rivers Library. Had a lovely lunch on the little patio on the back of the Three Rivers Library last month. We hold meetings around the county, and we continue to review policies and update them to make it a better service for the members of the community. The library advisory board wishes to publicly acknowledge the Tulare County library staff for their dedication to providing quality and meaningful library services throughout Tulare County. We particularly appreciate Darla Weggener's leadership and unwavering commitment to providing quality services in a way that meets the needs of Tulare County communities. And we also thank all the people that are involved with the Friends of the Libraries in the different communities, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any comments from my colleagues?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanna say that I wanted to thank Darla and her staff and the foundation for their assistance establishing the library in New London. That was a tremendous event, very well attended, and I hear good stories about the utilization of the library. I know people are very, very appreciative in that community. It represents the only county entity in that community, and so great to be a library. And nothing against our sheriff back there, but you know, it's a positive thing to have something like that. I mean, we do have law enforcement's presence there, which is greatly appreciated by the community as well. But so nice to have something on the civil side of things and encouragement and enlightenment for the people and assistance to the children. So well done, and thank you very, very much.
All right, thank you. This is an action item, and the chair will entertain a motion.
For approval.
I have a motion by Supervisor Ennis, a second by Supervisor Shucklian. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. We are now gonna move on to item number three on our agenda, the highlight of today's meeting, not to take away from any other item, but we know that's why everyone is here. We want to honor and recognize our county employees for their years of service, and at this point, I will turn over the presentation to our human resources team.
Good morning, Chairman Vanderpool, Supervisors, CAO Spata, Council Peterson, and to our employees and families and friends that are here this morning. I'm very honored to bring before you our employees who are being recognized for their long service to the county. Our Service Award Program for Tulare County recognizes employees who have completed 10 or more years of continuous service during the prior calendar year. It is also noteworthy to mention that while we do this annually, the board is recognizing employees during the month of April, which is also National County Government Month. We honor our employees this year for their loyalty, their hard work, their compassion and service ethic that they provide to their departments and the citizens of Tulare County. As I read a little bit about our awardees, you will hear that many are good Samaritans and humanitarians in other areas of their lives and volunteer in their church, and humanitarians in other areas of their lives, and volunteer in their church, school, local community, in other activities, and for service clubs. Many have also developed special hobbies and skills, talents, that you will hear a little bit about today. However, some are a little shy, and so we will be giving a very brief announcement on their award and recognizing and honoring their request to do so. Awards for employees who have completed ten years or more of service will be presented to the employees at the Employees Department. There are two-hundred-and-twenty that reached ten years of service this year. There are two-hundred-and-thirty-six this year who will be recognized for fifteen years or more of service. And today, we will be recognizing forty-five employees and providing them with their awards. Recipients, as your name is called, please come forward to receive your award up front here. Some of your fragile awards have boxes and special packaging that this year we have a table in the lobby, so after you receive your award, you can pick up your box in the lobby if it does not come packaged as we give it to you. I would like to apologize in advance if I mispronounce anyone's name, and I'm going to try to do my best to pronounce them all. So we will begin with District One Supervisor Kyler Crocker.
Been here three months.
And we are going to start with Dawn Bowlett. Dawn is a social service worker three with our Health and Human Services Agency and is getting her fifteen-year service award. She started in our Tulare Works Division and then transitioned to public health, to mental health, and now is at Human Services. She likes to read, to spend family time, and likes to go to Hawaii. Congratulations.
Who doesn't?
Lillian Correio. Lillian is a social services worker three with Health and Human Services Agency. She started as a CWS caseworker aide, promoted to social worker and to the various levels. She loves spending time with her four children and husband. Congratulations. Irene Ponce. Irene is an office assistant three with Health and Human Services Agency, but started her career out with the Workforce Investment Board. She has fifteen years of service. Congratulations. Rebecca Fugent. Rebecca is an office assistant four with Health and Human Services and is getting her twenty-year award today. She's worked for Tulare County in mental health for all of her twenty years, first as a medical transcriptionist and now as an office assistant four. She has been married for twenty-five years to a wonderful husband and is a mother to an amazing ten-year-old girl named Sophia. Congratulations. Bob Chavez. Bob is our lead CWS social service worker three. He has twenty-five years of service. Congratulations. Julie Bowers. Julie is an office assistant four at Health and Human Services and is getting her thirty-year award today. She also started as a medical transcriptionist and then served the last eight years as an office assistant. She has been recognized for two Employee of the Month awards during her tenure. Congratulations. Ken Bowers. Ken is an environmental health supervisor with HHSA and has served the county for thirty years. He has been during that time, three times, as the Employee of the Month. His supervisor says Ken is a valuable member of the Environmental Health Leadership Team, and we truly enjoy working with him, says Nelsa Gonzalez. District Two Chairman Pete Vanderpool. Our first recipient is Vanessa Avitia. Vanessa is an office assistant four, receiving her fifteen-year award at HHSA. She began as a clerk with the WID department and through time and persistence promoted to the position of OA four. In her other activities, I would like to say that Avitia has received certificates of appreciation for serving at, on the Latino Conference Planning Committee, Cultural Diversity, and the Kings Tulare County Area Aging, C on Aging. Melanie Gonzalez. Melanie is receiving her fifteen-year service award as a self-sufficiency counselor three in HHSA. She has worked with children's football, softball, and soccer programs. Congratulations. Cindy Hayes. Cindy is an office assistant four, getting her fifteen-year award today with Health and Human Services Agency. Monica Lucas. Monica is a self-sufficiency counselor two, getting her fifteen-year service award and also works at HHSA. Monica is a runner, loves to run and exercise with her daughter, and is on her star, all-star cheerleader as a team mother for her daughter. Congratulations. Luke Raper. Luke is a facility and property specialist with HHSA and has fifteen-year service award today. He's also received four employee recognition awards during his fifteen years with HHSA. He restores houses and muscle cars and enjoys being outdoors. Congratulations. David Rodriguez. David is a child welfare services manager and is getting his fifteen-year award. Enrique Sanchez. Enrique is receiving his fifteen-year service award and is a social service worker three. He is a graduate of Tulare Union High School, COS, and CSU Stanislas. He has a BA, Bachelor's in Psychology. He also played college baseball and has coached baseball for the past fourteen years. Renee Smale. Renee is a retirement specialist two, receiving her fifteen-year service award and is in our retirement department. Prior to coming to Tulare County, Renee worked and lived in England and was a financial planner, and joined our county, and has gone through our supervisory academy and various other trainings. Congratulations to Renee. She's about to become a grandmother. Margarita Hernandez. Margarita is receiving her twenty-year award. She's a social service worker three. She was recently named the Employee Recognition Program Certificate of Appreciation in 2016. Rosemary Juarez. Rosemary is a self-sufficiency supervisor, receiving her twenty-year award. She joined the county and has worked her way up from office assistant to eligibility worker to self-sufficiency resource specialist supervisor, and she's currently a program specialist. Congratulations. Donald Papenhausen. Donald is receiving his thirty-year service award today. He's an environmental health specialist three for Tulare County. He also serves on various committees and local and regional during his thirty years of service to the county. District Three Supervisor Amy Shuklian.
Oh, see, I pick up trash when I see it. Obviously, as many years of you all have, I don't know why we're giving them clocks because they're obviously on time if they laugh. So this is just a little reminder, we got time.
We'll begin with Belinda Boylan. Belinda is a staff services analyst three and is receiving her fifteen-year service award. She works for HHSA. Her hobby and interests include photography, wedding planning, and making things with her hands in her spare time. She is the proud mom of a wonderful young man who, at nineteen, is a paralegal specialist with the U.S. Army. Congratulations. Larry Fishburne. Larry is being recognized for fifteen years of service and is currently a mental health case manager four. He enjoys bowling, camping, and spending time with his kids. He is the proud parent of four adopted children from Tulare County. Heather Kramer. Heather is being awarded fifteen years of service. She is a social worker in adult services. Her supervisor says of her, she's a compassionate and effective client advocate. She always has the hearts of our frail senior citizens in mind and the growth of Tulare County services on her mind. Congratulations. Michelle Loscano. Michelle is being recognized for fifteen years of service as a social services worker three. Michelle enjoys traveling and camping with her family. She has five children, two boys of her own, and she has adopted three children in addition. Ha Li. Ha is being awarded her fifteen years of service as a public health microbiologist two. She enjoys cooking, swimming, and traveling. She's proud of many things in her life, but nothing beats being a mother of two beautiful children, Brandon and Adriana. Congratulations. Tanya Lopez. Tanya is receiving her fifteen years of service today. She's an administrative aide in Health and Human Services Agency. She enjoys running daily and making memories with her family. She has, is the mother of Abriel and a son, Anius. Anius. Congratulations. Rainbow Moore. Rainbow. Rainbow is receiving her fifteen-year service award. She's an administrative services officer in county council. A little bit about Rainbow. First of all, she's an avid fisherman, runner, and martial artist. She has a Bachelor's of Arts in teaching English as a second language from the university in Korea. She has also. Rainbow is earning her master's degree in business administration from Fresno Pacific and will graduate in December of this year. Congratulations. Rebecca Navarro. Rebecca is getting her fifteen-year service award, social services worker three, CWS. She enjoys photography and is also a member of a motorcycle club. Amanda Silva Sticks. Amanda is being honored for fifteen years of service and is currently a social service worker three in CWS. She enjoys reading, politics, and scrapbooking. She's a proud aunt and animal lover. Penny Smith. Penny is a social services worker two and is being honored for fifteen years of service today. Magdalena Vasquez. Magdalena is being honored for fifteen years of service and is an office assistant two. She enjoys arts and crafts, sewing, knitting, attending church, and hanging out with grandchildren, family, and friends. Congratulations. Kimberly Weeks. Kimberly is a social service worker three in CWS and is getting her fifteen-years service award. She has been honored for her first five of Tulare County as being a hands-on hero in 2015. Congratulations. Congratulations. Truly Yang. Truly is being awarded fifteen years of service as a social services worker three. Truly enjoys traveling, loves family road trips, and likes to see roadside attractions. Mary Jungworth. Mary is getting her twenty-year service award today and is a staff services analyst with our animal control within HHS A. She has a bachelor's degree in criminology, enjoys reading and working in the garden, and she is considered the historian of our animal shelter, having started there when we opened the shelter for Tulare County. Congratulations. Janet Newman. Janet is retired, and it was, a county financial technician three in our auditor treasure department. She is getting twenty-years service award today. Congratulations. She is a proud grandparent of five grandchildren and one great-grandchild. Congratulations. Monica Ledesma. Monica is being honored for thirty years of service as a senior account clerk today. She enjoys going to the gym and Pilates. She has a grandson and two granddaughters. John Morrow. John is being honored for thirty years of service to Tulare County. John is currently working with the Public Guardians Office, has served in many capacities in the county of Tulare. He likes spending time with his wife and adult children and hiking in the Sierra Nevadas. Congratulations. Julian Almanza. Julian is being honored for thirty-five years of service and is currently a senior... Julian is a senior investigator in our public defender's office. He was also the 2015 Employee of the Year. Congratulations. Jake Torrance. Jake is receiving a thirty-five-year award as a public defender investigator, enjoys fishing, boating, and of course, his grandchildren.
I think that was my last one, anyway, right?
Yes.
You can go ahead and stay down there if you'd like.
District Four Supervisor and Vice Chairman Steve Worthley will be giving out the awards, and we'll start with Armita Casada. Armita is receiving her fifteen-year service award and is a social services worker two. She enjoys baking, watching the Dodgers play, and play soccers with her family. Ulelia Sandoval. Ulelia is being honored for fifteen years of service and is a self-sufficiency counselor three. She enjoys camping with her family, and her supervisor says she is a true team player, always helping where needed, and gives a hand to assist the clients with respect and courtesy. Susanna Hansen. Susanna is receiving her twenty-year service award as a social services worker three. She's also received two Employee of the Month recognitions since her employment. Congratulations. Veronica Silva. Veronica is a mental health case manager two and is receiving a twenty-five-year service award today. She enjoys traveling and spending time with her family, also going to church and volunteering in community activities. Congratulations. District Five Supervisor Mike Innes. We'll begin with Veronica Andrade. Veronica is getting her fifteen-year service award and is a self-sufficiency supervisor. She enjoys scrapbooking, reading, and spending time with family. She's currently pursuing a master's in public administration at Fresno State. Dottie Ferguson. Dottie is receiving fifteen-year service award and is a self-sufficiency resource specialist. She has also received recently a mentorship award and other team awards. Congratulations. Deborah Rosa. Deborah is retired but receiving a fifteen-year service award and retired as a self-sufficiency resource specialist. She is a graduate of Strathmore High School. Woo! She enjoys gardening, crafts, and decorating. Congratulations. Chris Wall. Chris is being honored for fifteen years of service and is a social services worker three. She enjoys stock cars, NASCARs, and activities with her ten grandchildren. And that concludes our service awards for today. We will be returning next week, along with additional employees who will be honored for their service. I would like to also recognize my HRD staff who do the work to put this together and get awards to our employees, which is Judy Weens, our administrative coordinator. She's been doing this for many years. And today Billy Singleton is in the hallway and will be helping you with your boxes, giving you your packaging. And I'll turn it over to the board.
And real quick, before we wrap up and excuse you to go back to work, I know that board members really do like to make comments at this time of the year, so I'll go ahead and start on the far right with Supervisor Innes.
Yeah, thank you so much for your years of service. It's very important that the people of Tulare County know you and know your face, and you are the face of Tulare County. And so, you're in the trenches every day, you're doing the job, and we sure appreciate every endeavor you do. Make this county a better place for all of us to live. Thank you so much.
Supervisor Crocker.
I just want to reiterate that thank you for all your service, for every one of you, not just those in District One, but what a pleasure it is to meet with all of you and to get to know you, and I think that's what makes this county a well-oiled machine, when we have people that are dedicated and have been loyal to this county and working for many years, and that level of experience shows with the great work that you guys do day in and day out, so thank you.
Supervisor Worthley.
Well, it's always a great day when we can honor our employees, because as Supervisor Innes said, you are the face of Tulare County, you are the workhorse of Tulare County, and you are the leaders of Tulare County. We're the leaders in terms of being elected officials, but you are the ones who actually lead your colleagues at the workplace every day, and so we want to thank you for that service. Also, I hope you notice that as of today, that, I mean, in all of our meetings, we take the work that we do seriously, and I know that you do, too, but leave room for laughter, smiling, enjoying one another. I appreciate so much when you share a little bit about yourselves and what is important to you, and I thought it was very interesting today. I think grandchildren and children came out about number one and two in terms of what people like to do and spend time with, and I think that's just wonderful. So, thank you so much for your service, and we look forward to many more years. Thank you.
And yeah, the same here. I mean, we come up here and we make the decisions, but you guys do all the heavy lifting in order to get to that point. And my short time here, almost four months, going around and meeting folks, I've just been so impressed with the staff and everybody who's working diligently every day, and obviously with the years of service, it shows that Tulare County is a good place to be. Thank you all.
And my colleagues have already said quite a bit of what I would have said, but I also want to add to it that I'm very grateful. As a supervisor, I've been here for eight years, and I feel like each and every year, this is one of my favorite times of the year to actually honor and recognize the employees of our county who are out there delivering services, working hard, being dedicated to the residents that live here. You really are the face of this county, and we appreciate dedication, and it is nice to learn a little bit about you and to just become more family-like in this kind of a setting. And we want you to know that each of the small gifts that you are taking home with you is a small token of our appreciation of your dedication to stay at this organization for as long as you have, and your experience and your seniority is very much appreciated as we get towards more and more of our workforce and the baby boomer generation retiring. Your knowledge and the sharing of your experiences with your younger peers is very, very critical to the seamless transition into the future of service provision in Tulare County. So, I am very grateful for your service and look forward to being here and celebrating your fifty-year service ceremony, or however high you want to go. We'll try to see how long we can all last here, but thank you very much, and I hope you all have a wonderful day and continue back for many more years. Thanks. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on on our agenda for today. Take up now item number four. Item four is public comments. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on today's agenda but under our purview. Public comment can and will be limited to three minutes. Is there anybody here wishing to speak under public comment? Paul Boyer, are you coming forward or are you looking for a seat?
I'm looking for a seat.
Okay. All right, seeing no one coming forward for public comment, I'm going to close the public comment period and bring it to the board. We will now take up item number five, which is our public hearing, a request from the Agricultural Commissioner's Office to waive the second reading and adopt an ordinance amending Article Eight, Chapter Five, Part Five of the Ordinance Code pertaining to the theft of nuts. Marilyn, please enlighten us about this nut theft item.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. We have roughly a billion dollars' worth of nut crops grown in our county, and of those, walnuts are particularly vulnerable to theft during the harvest season because of the way they're shaken, swept up in a nice neat little row, and it's sometimes too much of a good thing for thieves to pass by. So, some of our producers and our growers came to me and to some of our supervisors and thought that there's, you know, we've been living with changes to our ordinance for a few years now, but there's some things that could improve it. So, there are about eight items that are up for consideration. The previous ordinance had authority given to the sheriff to take criminal actions. We would like to add the administrative civil penalty enforcement actions for the agricultural commissioners. We would impose the requirement that only original sequentially-numbered proof-of-ownership certificates, which are issued by our office, to be used at buying locations. They've got a red number on there, and they can only be used once. It was brought to our attention that in the metal law in the state of California, there's a thumbprint requirement, so we'd like to add that either on the proof-of-ownership certificate or receipt given by the buying stations. Also, checks only prior to the walnut cash-buying period. We've had processors that said they were willing to use checks because of the potential for criminal activity, somebody coming in with guns blazing, and a lot of cash changes hands, so it would be a checks-only policy with a ten-day hold, and the buying station could not turn around and give cash for that check. In the previous ordinance, there were some exemptions that were counterproductive for the growers, agents, and gleaning activities, so we would eliminate those exemptions and the ordinance would be for everybody involved. We would add a definition for the tiny growers that they have one or two trees in their backyard or they've got a ranchette with a few walnut trees, and they could get one of those proof-of-ownership certificates specifically for them. They can go to buying stations and sell their products if they choose to. And one really big sticking point for growers, they don't like to see the cash-for-walnut signs or the "we buy walnut" signage going up before the harvest season. They think that just attracts thieves. And those are the requirements. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions or comments from board members?
No, I think it just kind of tightens up the loopholes on everything and it makes it a whole...
it a whole lot better than what it was in the past.
All right, this is set for a public hearing. I will now open the public hearing and invite anybody forward who wishes to speak regarding this item.
I did hear from one walnut grower of 40 acres. I talked to him a couple of months ago, and he's up to here with more regulations, and he thinks the ordinance is just fine the way it is. And he's got 40 acres, and so, he can really proceed through the harvest without being inconvenienced. So, that's one that I've heard from.
He in my district, Marilyn?
Or Strathmore area.
Is there anybody wishing to speak? Okay. That's why, so I just heard that Sam Shaka's in Hawaii, and that's why he's not here. Otherwise, I'm sure he would be here to speak. But, seeing no additional public comment, I'm going to, I need to keep it open.
Yes, we'll put this over to 4:25.
Okay, we are going to move this, continue this item to the 25th of April, which is next week's meeting, and we will keep the public hearing open until that point in time.
Do you need a motion to continue the matter?
We will entertain a motion at this time.
Move to have the matter continue to the 25th?
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Supervisor Worthley, a second by Supervisor Shucklin. Please vote. Motion to continue passes unanimously.
Thank you.
We will now move on to our consent calendar. We will take up items six through 20. Item number six will be removed from calendar altogether. Item number eight will be removed just for separate comment. And I think that is all of the items that I have for corrections. Supervisor Worthley?
Mr. Chairman, I just only wanted to call attention to item 17, in that oftentimes when we have our construction projects, we usually have these matters come back for augmentation, that is, a request for additional dollars to be added to a project. In this case, we actually have a savings of $1,436,000 on the Avenue 416 widening project, which will then be reallocated to the Avenue 280 widening project. And I just wanted to point that out to the chairman. District Four is making a major contribution, so I just wanted to point that out. But actually, it's just good news, and that's an example of how Measure R has been so successful. Whenever we are able to save money or get other dollars to pay for projects, whether it's from federal, state funding, and move these monies around, we're able to do more someplace else and that much sooner. So, it's just good news.
Great. Any member of the public wish to have any item removed from the consent calendar or make comment? Okay, seeing none, the chair will entertain a motion regarding the balance of the consent calendar.
Do you approve the balance?
I have a motion by Supervisor Ennis.
Second.
A second by Supervisor Crocker. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Now, we will take up item number eight.
That's me. Good morning, Chairman Vanderpoel, members of the board, CEO Spada, and County Council, Samantha Ferrero, Board Representative, here to just speak briefly on this item. We have this on the agenda before you today to once again request your approval for the county and its employees to participate in Denim Day, which will be scheduled to take place next Wednesday, April 26. Denim Day is a national campaign held every year throughout the world to raise awareness of sexual violence. Denim Day is a worldwide event in which people are encouraged to wear jeans to show a strong visual support for victims of sexual violence. Just a brief history, you might be wondering why denim. In 1999, an Italian court overturned a rape conviction for the victim as she was wearing tight jeans, and they argued that in order, she had to consent to that act and remove the jeans. So, the denim shows a strong support for victims everywhere of this crime. We encourage all Tulare County residents and employees to consider wearing jeans next Wednesday in support of Denim Day to promote understanding and education regarding the prevention of sexual violence in our communities. We do want to note that employees should ask their supervisors before changing up any dress code protocol, but we appreciate your consideration of this item.
Okay. Any questions or comments from board members?
I'd rather soon wear ringers and boots every day if I get away with it.
I was just thinking about, a lot of times I see denim pants or jeans that have significant holes in them, so I'm assuming you're asking people to wear them without the holes, but...
Yeah, preferably within...
And you pay more for those holes.
I don't understand that.
Whatever people can afford.
All right. Any public comment related to this? I just thank staff for bringing this forward. I think that a separate presentation and a highlight of this is very appropriate. This is something that is a tragedy in our community and really does need to be highlighted in public awareness. Awareness is so important. So, when you're used to wearing slacks and suits, and when you wear jeans during the week, people call you out on it, and it's a good opportunity to start a conversation about it. So, move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
I have a motion from Supervisor Worthley, a second by Supervisor Michael T. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Supervisors.
Appreciate it. We are now going to move on to the untimed portion of our meeting. Take up item number 21, which is a request to receive a presentation regarding the drought impacts within Tulare County, the Governor's Executive Order of April 7, 2017, and the status of the Office of Emergency Services drought relief programs. Mr. Britt?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, CEO Spada, County Council, Jason Britt, Health and Human Services Agency Director, and I do have with me today Andrew Lockman, who are OES Manager, who will be available to help me answer questions during our presentation, along with many of our partners today who have been very helpful with the drought response in Tulare County. So, although it's pouring rain today, it is appropriate to give a drought update, because many things have happened, as you've been aware of this board, for, we started seeing some effects of the drought in late 2013 and 2014, and then we have sort of been in drought response mode since that. And then, so we'll talk a little bit about our response history, some of the current data that we have on the response programs, a brief cost review of the incident. We'll talk about the Governor's April 7 order, the status of our relief programs, and then some requests or discussions around that. So, I will try to be as brief as possible. So, just a brief timeline, really, in January, February 2014, we proclaimed the local and state emergencies for the drought. In July, East Porterville emerged as one of our hotspots, as we called it, for domestic wells going dry. And in 2014, actions, August action started, beginning with the bottled drinking water program that RMA has so wonderfully administered. Also, in September of that same year, the governor authorized the California Assistance Act funding, which then launched us into the Household Tank Program in January of 2015. In November of that year, DWR committed some money to look at a water project in Porterville, and is of March 2017, the first phase of the East Porterville Water Project has been Some of the response activities, there's been many of them, you have been fully aware of them, water deliveries, non-podable tanks, our drought task force, the bottled drinking water, Household Tank Program, mobile showers, our Resource Center out in East Porterville, donated bottled waters, and of course, focusing on water system creation and expansion. So, those are just highlights of what they have, what we have responded with. Currently, as of April 3, we've had 954 wells have permanent solutions now, 554 still have temporary solutions, and 103 are still dry, although as of Monday, the number reported dry has dropped to 90. So, even better statistics than when the presentation was submitted to the public. Again, this is kind of a snapshot of the dry well reporting. As you can see, in 2014, it kind of upticked, has peaked, and now has come back down here, and so, this has really been the reports of dry wells throughout this whole period. So, I want to take an opportunity to just highlight some resolution progress. So, the green, the more green, the better, just so as a point of reference. We started this, this is really from January 15, when the Household Tank Program started, and as you could see, the last, since January of 2017, the number of resolutions for dry wells have increased. And that's been a combination of wells coming back on, the completion of East Porterville, people drilling their wells, a number of solutions that individuals have undertaken. And this is just a closer, this is the same data, just a six-month snapshot, so you can really see in the last six months, resolutions have really increased throughout the county. The yellow line is still the number of household tanks that we have out there. The red line is the number of active well failures that we are still tracking. Briefly, I just wanted to kind of throw this slide in there. It shows a decline of our usage of the mobile shower units that are out in Porterville and the drought resource center. Although there is still some heavy usage here, we suspect some of that usage is from maybe individuals out of the area, or perhaps individuals who may be experiencing temporary homelessness. But all in all, CSAT, our drought resource partner, and many others are seeing a steady decline in the usage of that response. Non-podable tanks, this is, again, these are the sort of large, big tanks we have placed around the county. These are not the household tanks where people can go and fill their waters. We're starting to see usage here drop off. The different colors represent the different communities. There still is pretty high usage here in Visalia, and then in East Porterville, but that is starting to trend down as they're hooking up to their system there and beginning to improve. The total gallons depicted in this, on this slide, is over 1.5 million gallons of water in the, behind those numbers. Household tanks, again, you see, this is from the beginning of the program. We ramped up, been at our high point, and now we're starting to trend back down, again, largely due to the connections of the East Porterville line, area, and some individuals finally getting wells either drilled or recharging. This shows a snapshot of how long the average household has been on the Household Tank Program, red being 19 to 24 months, so that's the highest that you see. We've been in this program now for about 28 months, and so, right now, the average for clients who have had their tanks removed has been about a year being on the program, and then for clients who are actively on the, still on the program today, they've been on the program about 14 months. So, it kind of ebbs and flows as people come off and come on the program, but that sort of gives you a snapshot there. Again, the original intent of this program was to give people a temporary patch until they could seek a more permanent solution, whether that be well drilling, connection to a nearby service, or other project. And so unfortunately, many, some of these individuals who have been on this program for a long time either have not been, are not near a municipal water source to connect in, or perhaps have not had the financial assistance to drill their well or to make progress on resolutions for their water situation. This is just a map of where our current tanks are located today. I know it's really small and hard to see, I apologize, but it kind of just gives you an overall picture. There's a little over 450 or 60 tanks still deployed out in the rest of the county. Most of the East Porterville tanks, I think we're down to about eight or 10 in East Porterville, so, again, these are mostly deployed out in the rest of the county. So, a brief cost review. Again, a lot of the expenses have been covered through the California Disaster Assistance Act. Our county share of that, this is July 2014 to February 2017, we've spent about $1.8 million. We've received about $1.2 back in assistance dollars, leaving our general fund outlay a little over $585,000. And again, there is a 25% match to those CDA dollars, so that's what comprises that $585,000 cost. Some selected cost detail are, the mobile showers continue to be about $30,000 a month, again, partially covered by CDA, but there is still a match. The non-podable tanks is about $15,000 per month, and household tanks continue to run us quite a bit between the water deliveries and all the staff time devoted to those. We estimate that as of March 1, 2017, that Cal OES, with all of the projects they've done in Tulare County, all of the CDA funds they've put in, including the West, the Porterville project, everything, has probably spent about $19 million in drought response in Tulare County. So, we wanted to just highlight that because it has been quite a collaboration between the state and between the county, but it has also provided some opportunities to improve things that, within the county, with the assistance of the state. So, that brings me to April 7. So, on April 7, the drought, the governor said the drought's over, except for four counties, Tulare, Kings, Fresno, and Toomey. However, even though he did not terminate the drought status in Tulare County, he is terminating the California Disaster Act funding effective June 30. We had a conference call with Cal OES last Monday to pose questions and to ask for clarification on this order, and everything so far from Cal OES is that the guidance is, the intent of the governor is to actually terminate the California Disaster Assistance monies on June 30. There are still some unknown items that we are working with the Cal OES on to get clarification, such as who owns the tanks, what are we going to do with the tanks when they're removed, can they be sold, who can sell them, how we can sell them, and most importantly, is the state going to provide CDA funding after June 30 for a period of time to help us remove these tanks without it becoming a net county cost? So, the preliminary indications from the state is that they are open to providing us some window of time to demobilize the responses, if that is what the board chooses to do, but we don't have that in any kind of policy or writing. So, it's kind of been an odd situation where the governor continued the drought, but didn't continue assistance for the drought. We believe primarily, if you look at the way the, the way the executive order is written, and I'm not a legal beagle, but it seems to keep it open to, for DWR to continue some of their response, which is the Department of Water Resources, to continue with the Oakville Solution, the Porterville Solution, the Bottled Water Program, and some other solutions that come out of that pot of funding versus the Disaster Assistance funding, but that's just sort of my Monday morning quarterbacking. So, where we are today is, the need for podable tanks and mobile showers has decreased. The well drilling backlog, when I talk to Environmental Health, has pretty much been eliminated. There's not very many permits being issued anymore. More towards the normal side of things in the years past. There is still some funding assistance through self-help and other entities, and then we still do have 468 individuals on the Household Tank Again, we currently pay the permits in the water, and our nonprofit partners purchase, install, maintenance, test, water hauling, removal, and clinging. So, we have, we have been able to reduce about 160 tanks from East Porterville, and again, all of the nonprofit work is 100%. So, we get a little better return on... So we get a little better return on that work. So 75% if it's done by the county, 100% if it's done through the nonprofits. And we really appreciate their partnership and their patience and their help throughout this process. We kind of threw out a cost estimate that if we were to continue these response activities and continue with what we're doing today and not have the CDA funding, we would project costs to be somewhere around $4 million on an annualized basis. And again, you know, this is for all of the responses that we've discussed in the slides. So significantly, it is a significant cost to the county, depending on how we wish to continue with our response. Finally, you know, we'd like to bring forward a couple of recommendations that we go ahead and move forward, terminating the mobile showers and the non-potable tank programs with a posted 60-day notice or sooner, if the state reduces funding. And the "or sooner" means, just so we have clarification, that if the state says there's no CDA funding to remove tanks or to demobilize their response after June 30th, we would immediately begin taking action to notify property owners and to begin demobilizing these responses, including removal of household tanks, and try to get that completed by June 30th, if that is the direction from the board. But again, that's the "or sooner" part. So if OES from the state comes back and says, you know, on April 10th, when we kind of thought you might get three or four months to, you know, a funding to help you remove some of these tanks, and they come back and say, nope, June 30th is the day, then the "or sooner" is we would start to work with the community, notify the community, and work with our nonprofits to try to demobilize as much of the response as we could before the funding runs out. So I hope that makes sense. And again, to maintain a moratorium on the new household tank program clients, terminate services to the existing clients is on June 30th or sooner. And with that, we would request that you receive this presentation regarding the drought impacts, the governor's executive order of April 7th, and the status of the Office of Emergency Services drought relief programs, and provide direction as to continue operation or demobilization of counties' California Disaster Assistance Act-funded response activities, including the household mobile showers, non-potable tank sites, and the household tank program. And before I do conclude my presentation, I do want to thank the CAO's office, the board, RMA, County Council, for really working with us on all of these complexities, and as well as our nonprofit partners who have stood behind us and support every step of the way. So with that, I would be happy to entertain questions or have further discussion.
This is not set for action. We're just going to be giving general direction at this time, but we got to make sure we keep in mind that there's 58 counties in the state of California, and there's been lots of rain in all of them, and we just have an isolated bubble of dryness around us. So the drought still exists here in Tulare County. But go ahead, Supervisor.
I thought they should change the terminology. I mean, the drought's over, but the effects of the drought are not over, and that's really what we're dealing with, are the impacts. Jason, it's my understanding the state is saying they don't want these tanks, right? I mean, technically, the tanks belong to the state of California, is that correct?
They are trying to figure that out. That's part of the guidance that they're supposed to give us, is who really owns the tanks. And my sense is the state doesn't want the tanks back, but I don't know how they're going to assign ownership. So there's still those outstanding questions.
All right. So here's a thought I had, is that, first off, the county needs to get out of this business when the state's out of this business, right? We cannot afford to continue this type of service without that compensation. One approach I would think would be, for those who are still dependent upon the tank system because they don't have the resources and have not drilled a well, or they don't have some other benefit coming their way, like in the case of Monson, there's still 11 tanks, but as we speak, they're in the process of putting in a system, so they're going to be going off of that, hopefully, about the time we run out of money here. But one approach would be, I mean, if we look at these tanks as being a quote liability, because we're at the cost of removing them and so forth, give it to the people. I mean, just let them, you know, give them a bill of sale and let them have it, and then let them pay for water delivery if that's what they choose to do. I know that in Arizona, a number of years ago, I was there, people actually build homes there, and then part of the conditions are, they build a home and they put a water tank in, and they have water delivered to them, and that's how they build houses, because water can be so scarce in certain places. But an approach there, then whatever requirements are from the Department of Health in terms of having these tanks monitored or checked, whatever, that should be also on the property owner. In other words, we just shift it over to, here's a tank, rather than we spending money or the state spending money of getting that tank out of there, it's your tank. If you want to continue to use it, if you want to sell it, if you want to do whatever you want with it, I mean, why incur a liability if there's a way of avoiding it? And then also, it can provide a solution, because if there are people who still can't, under whatever circumstances, afford to put in a well, here's a way for them to still have potable water, stay in their homes, and continue on, but it ought to be at no expense to the public. At this point, it needs a shift to the private property owner into the homeowner. Just one supervisor's thought about how we might proceed.
Jason, have you...
Supervisor Ennis.
Jason, have you, what is it costing us, or costing the state, to fill a residence tank per month? Have you got any idea?
About $600 a month.
Okay. They're not going to want to keep that tank. I can tell you right now, they're not going to spend $600 a month for water. Because if you can spend $600 a month for water, why don't you just drill the well? But I'd be contacting these people right now and telling them, this thing is probably going to go away in June. You better determine where you want to go from here. And I'm not, you know, I'm not trying to be in any way mean or anything else, but sooner or later, you've got to continue on, you've got to continue, you chose to live in the country. And like I say, I drive around out there all the time, and I'm seeing two- and $300,000 homes with a tank in the front yard. And then I talk to other people, oh yeah, our well went dry, we just called the well driller, came out, it cost us some money to get it done, but we drilled the well deeper and we're going on. So people just need to stand up and take care of their own responsibilities in some of these cases. That's my feeling of it.
Supervisor Crocker, would you like to respond?
Not respond, but I'm just looking for clarification on the household tank program. Can you talk about that a little more? Because I'm thinking about it in reference, I know the county, we receive funding for bottled water program. And so how do those, because we just had additional dollars for one program, so we're going to continue that with that dollars, but here's these other programs that we're shutting down, or possibly.
So the bottled drinking water program is sort of potable water.
Right.
And the household tanks are, you know, to hook up, to wash dishes, to flush toilets, take baths, do the non-potable pieces. And so that's kind of the distinction. And the distinction also is, is that the bottled water program, and I know Eric Coines here because he's involved in that, that is funded out of the Department of Water Resources side. And so that goes out to a number of households for them to drink. The tank is not designed for drinking. So does that make sense? And they're not always the same clients, but sometimes they are.
So that makes sense as far as bottled versus, so I guess my question, the next question would be, what's the difference between non-potable tank program and household tank program?
So the non-potable tanks are very large, so for example, like next to the animal control facility and the, there's a big black tank out in front. So that's the non-potable tank program, where people can just come, and it's like a fill station. So they can fill their own bottles with non-potable water to take where they want to go. So yeah, it gets a little confusing between non-potable, household tank, but that's sort of like a fill station model versus installed on the home.
And to give you a little supervisor's...
Yeah, first off, it concerns me how, you know, you can say the drought is over, except in these four counties. We've already had issues with LA, San Francisco, other big areas who didn't even know we were in a drought, or, you know, still watered like we were. So now it's kind of like, well, you've got to open permit to do whatever you want. I kind of like a hybrid version of the tank. If people want to keep their tanks and pay the 600, because, you know, how much is it to drill a well? At least $15,000 according to Supervisor Worthley. So some folks may not have that upfront, and they may be able to do the 600 a month rather than 15 or 20 upfront, so.
I wonder if they could get a pace loan to drill.
Yeah, but...
I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Why?
A couple of thoughts. One is, we have treated it as non-potable, but these actually can be potable water supplies. We've just so chosen, because of a liability issue, to treat it as non-potable, but these are actually systems that can be potable. And so, I mean, again, if it shifts to them, it's no longer on us, it's on the owner. If they choose to want to use it as potable supplies, they could do that. And we are delivering potable water. Why it costs $600 is because these are trucks and water which is certified as being potable. We're putting them into a tank and saying it's not potable, but actually, it could be. The other thing is that they're charging the government rate of 600, but I have a feeling, if it's a private enterprise and they say, how much are you going to charge me if I want to bring it in, it might be a very different number. If you've ever had to pay to have your windshield replaced with your insurance company versus what they're going to charge you out of your pocket, it's amazing the difference. So I do think that is still an option for people. But I think you're hearing from the board is that we cannot just step into this program and continue it. It was designed to be a temporary measure, and temporary is coming to an end. And that end, to me, looks like June 30th.
Many of these folks are in East Porterville that have not, I understand from Supervisor Ennis, a lot of folks have not even hooked up to that, the phase two. And so are they still going to expect to have this if they haven't hooked up?
A little history on East Porterville. Why do you think we put a public utility district in out there for their sewer? Because most of them are on sand points. You've got a sand point at 15 to 20 feet deep, you've got a septic tank right here with a leach line, what do you think's going to happen?
Groundwater recharge.
Early version of toilet attack. And that's where it comes into play, is these are not wells. Most of the people in East Porterville have a legitimate well. I'm talking 100 feet or deeper. They didn't run out of water in the drought. They got water. I know people out there that's had water all the way through the drought. But a sand point is the old Okie people, my era, came out from Oklahoma, and the easiest way, because water was only 10 foot down. So they'd go 20, and they say, hey, we even got reserve here. But when the water's not running, and the slew isn't running through East Porterville, you've got no water. And some of those people, their wells have come back a little bit, and I guess they're thinking, well, it's over. Well, it's not over. And if you've got a chance to hook up to a clean water system where you can not only use it but drink it, why not hook up? I mean, to me, it's a no-brainer. So I don't know what these people are thinking about, but down the road, $12,000 to hook up if you don't hook up now.
But Mike, I mean, the thing I think about is that they have, you know, we did all this because people did not have an option. We went to these emergency measures because they had no options. They have options, yeah. And so that means the need for us to step forward is gone. I mean, we don't need to continue doing that, because if people have chosen to go another way, that's their choice. We don't have to feel responsible for them having chosen to do something else.
All right. Before we get any further onto soapboxes, general direction, I do think that you don't see support from this board to continue this program beyond the June 30th date. And if the funding evaporates sooner than June 30th, we're going to be acting a lot quicker to terminate this program, because at a cost of $4 million, $4.5 million, I'm going to. At a cost of $4 million, $4.5 million, we don't have that kind of discretionary money to expend on this program. So with that, I will open up the floor for public comment at this time, if there's anybody wishing to speak. Please state your name and address for the record, and because you are an elected official, I will be limiting your time to three minutes.
Thanks for the special treatment, Chairman Vanderpool. Paul Boyer, 225 North Burnage in Farmersville, and it's a pleasure to be here this morning. You know, we're definitely real involved in the tank program. We're asking the governor's office if there's a way they can extend the deadline of funding past June 30th for those areas impacted by the drought. And we would ask that the Board of Supervisors consider requesting the state to extend that funding for those people that do not have water. I was at the Tulare Irrigation District Office yesterday, and we were looking at maps of groundwater levels in spring of 2016, fall of 2016, spring of 2017, that just came out this month. Over there in Oakville, which is the reason we were there, the groundwater level's about 170 feet. The water level went down a little bit between spring to fall of 2016, and it stayed steady from fall to spring this month, meaning all that rain, all that snow, it's percolating, but it hasn't reached a lot of the aquifers. And in fact, we still get calls from people with new wells going dry. So as we all know, there's a lot of people still affected because we depend on groundwater. One reason we're asking that you consider requesting extension to state for funding is that the Monson Water Project that you just approved, the scheduled date of completion on that is August of this month, which is two months after the funding for these water deliveries would end. In Oakville, we're just, are at the stage where I think we're getting a final parcel map approved for the well site, that we're advancing funds to purchase, and that project is scheduled to be for completion in March 2018. So it goes to show that even though steps are being taken to get permanent solutions, it takes time. And I know that Susan Atkins from our offices here, they could explain more what the situation with people in private wells trying to get funding for, you know, for new wells. Next, I would say that, you know, I like the approach of giving people the option either to purchase or to have the tank for themselves. Before all this funding started, people were finding ways with buckets and barrels and everything else to get water. I think they'll find ways to put water in those tanks, although if there is a way to still get the state to cover those costs for a while longer for those people that are out of water, that are doing whatever they can to get a permanent solution, we request that, you know, again, that you would support that. So thank you.
Mr. Trump, I think you make a good point, Paul. I mean, like in every case, there are exceptions. So as you say, in the case of these communities where we are moving towards a permanent solution, there may be this gap of time, and perhaps that makes a very good argument for us to make back to the state, too, that they would make an, you know, they can have a general rule saying we're going to stop the wholesale funding, but there may be exceptional circumstances where they would continue. But I think that's a good suggestion, and I understand that, because it doesn't make sense for people to do, when we look at people who are out in the middle of nowhere saying, you know, you better drill a well, because there's really no option for you. But if you're in a place where you've got that little window of time there between using the barrel, I'm sorry, the barrel, the rain barrel, using the tank and then before your permanent solution kicks in, it doesn't make a lot of sense for people to do something different in the interim period of time other than to continue to use those. Anyway, I think that those ought to be looked at as exceptional circumstances. And one other question I have, Mr. Chairman. When we talked about the money that we have spent, over half a million dollars, is that money out of pocket towards the actual purchase of supplies and materials, or is that labor cost primarily?
Pretty much been everything, I believe. It's pretty much been our cost to the CDA expenditures, because we have a 25% match.
Right. What I'm trying to understand is a 25% match, is it being, is it what we're spending for you all, your time and effort, or is it money spent on actual tanks or water delivery service, something like that?
Mr. Vice Chairman, those costs are primarily the match for the mobile showers for the household tank program, staff time, permits, and water, so we don't actually have any purchased material costs.
Okay, thanks.
All right, is there any additional public comment at this time? Please state your name and address for the record.
Susan Atkins, I'm with Self-Help Enterprises, 8445 West Elwin Court, Visalia 93290. I've been actively involved with the tank program, as well as permanent solutions throughout the valley. We have obtained about $5 million from the state of California to assist families with permanent solutions. We have over 800 families that have yet to achieve a permanent solution in the eight counties which we service, primarily in Tulare County, being close to about 500. And we have nowhere near enough funds to assist all of these families. So I want to encourage the board to not only request possible delayment for the program as far as providing... program as far as providing water to families, but also to ask the state to find additional money for permanent solutions so that we can help these families get off tanks and find new wells. Most of the connection programs are moving forward, they just take a little time, but the individual wells themselves, there's just not enough funding to assist them. And the cost of a new well is about $27,000.
How much?
Twenty-seven.
$27,000. And that includes, you know, all the new well and abandonment of the old well and what have you. So, that's, that's about an average. Would you see them a little higher? Would you see them a little lower? But that's about what the average is.
Okay. Any additional public comment? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public comment period, bring it back to the board. There is no action, but has sufficient direction been provided, or are there any specific points that you would like clarity on?
I just, I did want to just say, Mr. Chairman, that once we do receive further clarification from the state, we'll be back either to update the board and add a public comment or a agendized presentation.
All right, that's great. Thank you very much. Yeah, sure.
I just like, so, from my standpoint, if, if we can seek additional dollars, if they're willing to, then I think that's what I would like to see, but if not, then the recommendation as stands as far as that, I'm supportive of.
I, I think too that, I agree with that, and I, I think the approach to take, just as was done this morning, is to be strategic, right? We're not asking for the state just to continue the program wholesale, but to look at these, these individual situations which are shortfall in terms of permanent solution funding in the interim period before we get to the permanent solution. And, and one thing I, I also want to add is that one of the aspects of these, of this drought, I know certainly up in the northern part of the county, and I can't speak for the rest of the county, has been a tremendous increase in capacity to drill wells. I mean, the, the major driller up there had borrowed $10 million to buy additional drilling rigs and so forth. He's probably paid for them all by now. My point is this, that there is excess capacity perhaps in the drilling side of things. That means that the cost of drilling these wells may be more negotiable. I've also seen them more willing to take, in other words, they have a lot of cash upfront. They're more willing to, to see timely payment schedules for people. So, it's not like you just got to come up necessarily with $27,000 or $20,000. You may be able to work out a payment schedule with the drillers. So, there are other options out there to keep in mind, and we might even want to have some conversations with drillers about what they are doing and what they're willing to do as we look at helping our, our folks to deal with these problems. So, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else want to muddy the waters even further?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right. We will now move on, on our agenda and move to item number 22, which is a request from the Resource Management Agency to establish an ad hoc committee comprised of two members of the Board of Supervisors to assist the county with evaluating the redesign of the Capitol display for Tulare County that is exhibited in the state Capitol. Mr. Coine.
Good morning. As you all know, from your, your many visits to the governor's office, in the state Capitol, they showcase the 58 counties by providing a shadow box, a display box, where we could talk about what's neat and wonderful about each of our areas. This, these have been around since at least 1952. Our exhibit, I've been involved with, and I've tracked the history back to 91. At that point, we were looking at updating it. We updated it in 92 and 2008. Before, before I did the update in 92, it hadn't been updated in about 10 years. So, one of the challenges is, these were great when you, when you were dealing with static displays and the Stone Age technology, because most people just, they were wired for a 50-watt light bulb, and whatever you could fit in a four-by-six box is what you got. Now, we have a lot more to tell, a lot more to showcase, and our, our part of the Capitol has not been rewired because it would mean dismantling the governor's inner sanctum to get to the wiring. So, that wiring on ours is not up to the same standards as some of the others you've seen that are interactive. Some of them have full flat-screen TVs with interactive displays and all the things we wish we could do if we could afford them. So, anyway, as, as was brought to our attention, we settled on trying to have a very nice static display that also used a digital screen to provide updates, and it's gone dark. It went dark a couple of years ago, and it was, it was updated just two years ago, and the wiring worked for a while, and then, I don't know, it probably got too hot in there, and it's failed. So, anyway, it's become dated. We've had complaints. Most of the complaints come from constituents. I've had reports back from board members. I've had reports from a couple of legislators over time saying, you know, there's, "When are you going to update us?" So, we would like to begin that process again. The last update, but all of these depend on community outreach, and, you know, how do you, if you're going to tell the representative tale for the county, whose tale are you going to tell? How do you boil that down to a small little display? And I think the, the key thing here that we've learned through experience is making sure we're in touch with the, the powers that be. This is really, it represents the board as well as the county. And so, what we would like to propose this time is that the board form an ad hoc committee of a couple of board members. We've done this other, this before very successfully with key crucial projects. We consider this a key crucial project because it's the image of the county, and so, we would like you to consider forming an ad hoc committee, appointing a couple of board members. And then, we have taken some steps to provide the tools to ensure a successful outcome. We were proposing to fund this project with a, an increase of $10,000 in the tourism budget, so it will be adequately funded. The resource management, management upper leadership has talked. We would like to, we will provide a staffer and assist with all the outreach and working with the chambers of commerce and different community groups. But we found that two other valuable partners that we think would be very, very helpful to this. One is the Sequoia Tourism Council, because they're active all over the county on our behalf, and also the Arts Consortium, which we've enjoyed a very fruitful partnership with the Arts Consortium. The Arts Consortium has helped us recently with RMA with adding art and design emblems to our public bridges. As Supervisor Ennis knows, we, we incorporated that into the Dry Creek Bridge, and we think that happened very, 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 very successfully. Michael Kreps, one of the founders of the Arts Consortium, has talked to, talked to us extensively about this. He's willing to volunteer his time. He's an architect. He has an excellent working relationship with the College of Sequoia's Architectural Program. One of the thoughts we thought, is given direction from the ad hoc committee is maybe that we, you know, there's the vision, and how do you turn the trans, the vision into representative art? And with the technical advice and expertise that an architect can add to this and, and their circle of contacts, we think we could provide a very, very professional project. So, we're asking you today for your input and direction, and if you like this idea, to form an ad hoc committee, appoint a couple of board members, and we're anxious to get started.
I've got a couple of thoughts real quick before I turn it over to my colleagues. So, we have, it definitely needs to be addressed. I'd like to see the Capitol display updated. I think the ad hoc committee format is wonderful. It's a great way to have a very inclusive process. We should involve partners we've got great track records with, and I do think our cooperation, collaboration with the Arts Consortium has been fantastic. I love the bridge project and, and the work that came out of that partnership there. We also have two supervisors. One loves to ride trains. The other loves to travel. So, I think that we've got a perfect setup already for an ad hoc committee that can travel throughout the county and take in public input and really make this a very inclusive process, as well as travel to Sacramento multiple times to.
We'll be there Thursday, and I plan to check them all out.
To view the display and strategize going forward. But that would be my guidance on the ad hoc committee, but I do think it's very necessary, and as long as it's a very inclusive process, I think we're going to end up with a great product. Supervisor Worthley?
I think you're just right on, Mr. Chairman. In terms of membership. One thing I was going to say is that the good news is with LED, you don't need hardly any power whatsoever. I mean, so, we should not have this problem going forward. My guess is we probably did not have LED flat screens in there because.
Well, actually.
My son put a 60-inch, it, it runs on 70 watts, right? So, I mean, they don't use any power. So, you should be able to put something in there that uses, has, will not generate heat, use very little power, and unless you've got a power failure, we should be able to accommodate a very nice display with LED functioning.
Yeah, so, let's not get too much into the weeds of this, and we can let the ad hoc committee do it. And I just am looking to my right to see concurrence on the ad hoc committee format.
Very, very much so.
Okay.
You act like it's, you act like it's a bad thing.
Especially with Supervisor Crocker. You know, his, his theme song now is the old Willie Nelson on the road again. No, good choice. I think they'll do a very good job.
Okay.
I just, I have a couple of questions.
Sure, go ahead.
Other than the malfunctioning of the screen, you just feel like this is not a good display?
Well, as with any, I, I don't want to say I don't. It's my responsibility if we put it together.
People don't. What are the complaints that people are saying?
It could be improved upon.
It could be improved. And if you compare to other counties.
And that's what I'm going to do, yeah.
So, so maybe go up there when you're, when you're up there this week and take a look at that, and that will be a good start for the ad hoc committee. Supervisor Crocker?
Well, I, I apologize to my colleagues because I, I believe I brought this up after my first trip to Sacramento in January, and.
So, you're a perfect fit for the committee then?
I didn't say that, but I, you know, I, I, to respond to Supervisor Shucklian's question, the, the thoughts that I had was, one, the display, and I, I guess my apology is for, I didn't necessarily anticipate that this would become such a formalized process, but I, I'm not necessarily opposed to it. But the, the display was not working, and the fact that we have the largest tree in the world, and we have such a great asset in the, in our, in Sequoia's throughout the county, whether it's in Sequoia National Park or on the monument or elsewhere in, in Balch Park, there, there wasn't any depiction of, of a Sequoia in that display, and I thought that was something that, that we should, that we should embrace. But they, the agricultural heritage, the, it's not a Sequoia.
I don't know if this is a Sequoia or a marijuana plant. Look at it.
Yeah, so, I guess that's, that's just what I bring, but, you know, I think there's, I, I think the, the look, and I didn't realize at the time with bringing up that Porterville Leadership Class had, had redesigned it so quickly. I, I think that that was somewhat of a surprise that they, that their redesign was in the end of 2014, so possibly the ad hoc can look at some type of regular rotation or something as far as what, what that timeframe is, what's an appropriate timeframe to revisit as part of it. But other than that, I don't necessarily have any other comments.
I think with the leadership process.
Let me open up the public comment real quick, Eric, and see if the Arts Consortium has any ideas. Mike, do you want to talk? I just saw you lingering right there, so I figured I'd do the opportunity.
If there's any questions or anything, my, my name's Michael Kreps. I reside at 3750 South Demery in Visalia, and we kind of look forward to additional partnerships with the county. I mean, we, we think this is a good working relationship we have, and we want to continue it, and we're excited to kind of help out with this project. And if you are reluctant to help out, we'll try to encourage you a little bit more, but certainly think it could be a good project for all of us, so, anyway.
Great.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I'm not reluctant to help. I just, hopefully you're flexible in meeting times, you know, 5:00 AM might be a good time or something to fit in the schedule.
The reason we want Mike involved, we won't have some people.
I get up at 4:30.
Beautiful. That's perfect. Willing partner.
The Sequoia's a marijuana plant. You know, the Leadership Council did a great job, but the in-design came to the board, and the first time you saw it was on its way to the Capitol. And so, by getting involved in the front end and knowing that they're going to reach out and work with the communities at your direction, we'll feel, we'll feel, we'll have better outreach and buy-in in the end result. And just to clarify, the funding for this is being authorized in a request that we'll bring next week for the future budget, for fiscal, the next fiscal year. We, we can do all the planning work within our budget this year.
Okay, great. I, so I do, I do think that there is an interest. We've designated two members. I think this should be a regular standing ad hoc committee and should meet on a very routine basis. And, yeah, so we have Supervisor Shucklian and Supervisor Crocker.
I believe the ad hoc would, would make that determination as far as.
The chair will entertain a motion at this point in time.
I show that I have no reluctance in this whatsoever. I move to appoint Supervisor Crocker and myself to the ad hoc committee for the Capitol display.
Second. Okay. We have a motion in a very eager second from Supervisor Worthley. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. All right. Now, we're going to move on to item number 23, which is a request from the Resource Management Agency to reaffirm the findings in the EIR that was completed under SEQA and was adopted by the board on, on May 2nd, 2012. Come on, read, help me out, bud. This is a long.
And most importantly.
I'll keep reading.
Move forward with the project, absolutely. This is a pretty exciting moment for me with Avenue 280. We started working, at least when I did, back in 2008 or so, so, quick, read shanky with the Resource Management Agency. Good morning. This is our 280 widening project, segment one. We've got two items actually before you, but for housekeeping purposes, we kind of combined them into one presentation. The first item is to basically approve the project and authorize us to go forward with advertisement, and then the second is just the agreement, the funding agreement with TCAG Measure R to actually pay for the project. Little bit of background on the project. Avenue 280, or Caldwell otherwise known as, runs from State Route 99 through Visalia, through Farmersville, and through Exeter, so it's really an important corridor for the public traveling through those regions. The need for the project came forth a number of years ago, and a 2011 traffic study identified that forecasted traffic would be at a level of service D to F, which is the worst. With the project, we're looking at a B, so the primary reason for the project is capacity enhancement. It's a heavily supported TCAG regional project, supported, paid for by Measure R primarily. So, you can see, we've got three segments here. Segment one is the portion that we're talking about in between 99 and Acres in the city of Visalia. Latter portions of the project coming in the next few years, hopefully if funding becomes available, would be segment two, running from Visalia to Farmersville, and then segment three, running from Farmersville to Exeter. The city of Visalia is currently in design for kind of some of the final widenings from two to four lanes within their city portion. Farmersville is under construction right now, real active, and Exeter is, I believe, wrapping up design and some right-of-way purchases for the portion within their city as well. So, it's all coming together ultimately for a nice four-lane corridor all the way through to Exeter. As I mentioned, we're looking to improve traffic operations and reduce the congestion along the corridor, primarily to improve the regional transportation system within those cities and communities, increase the access to the commercial centers in Visalia from State Route 99, and then furthermore, Farmersville and Exeter, and also to increase development opportunities within the county portion along our segment, primarily right at the interchange area there with 99. Project is two-lane to four-lane widening. There will be some architectural treatments. We recognize that this is primarily a gateway with, to the city, so it's not going to be the standard dirt median in between four lanes of traffic that is kind of typical throughout the rest of the county, so we'll have some nice finishes associated with it. Traffic signal at Shirk, which is pretty highly needed, that backs up pretty heavily even currently. Bike and pedestrian facilities, something that it's kind of new developing in the bicycle world is these buffered bicycle lanes, so it's a, a little bit wider bike lane with two painted stripes to protect the bicyclists on the corridor there. And then, Class 1 pedestrian and bicycle facility, which is an off-the-shoulder multi-use trail along the corridor. Part of the secondary reason for doing that pedestrian facility is public utility easements so that when future development goes in there, they don't have to dig up the road, they can do it off the side of the roadway. So, we've acquired the, the easements to do that as well in the future, kind of looking towards future development. We're relocating a little bit of the Evans Ditch, which is that open ditch that runs along the south side of the road, replacing the Box Culver at Shirk, providing storm drainage system. drainage system for the whole segment, so it's not just run off to the side of the road, it will be um a lot of curb and gutter through there, so we're doing a storm drainage system with a big basin, and as I mentioned, the future utility corridor easement. Uh with the schedule, clearing and grubbing is already underway, so if you've driven through there, hopefully you've seen some of the the right-of-way acquisition that's taken place, and we're moving some of the trees, some of the um facilities that are in the way of the roadway widening. Utility relocation, we've been working real closely with Edison Company. Um they've uh committed to us that they'll be ready to go July and then probably be done by October or so. Um to get those poles, that's a main transmission line through there, so there are some pretty intensive electrical facilities along the way. And then roadway construction, starting this summer and moving through December of two thousand eighteen. There's some timing we've gotta work out with drainage or water flows in the ditch. Um we don't wanna be working during the heavy rainy season over the the next year, so it does work out to be about a year and a half or so of construction. Uh with funding, we've got an estimated budget of a little over sixteen million, primarily from Measure R, um and then one point two million from county road funds. So one of the items that Supervisor Worthley noted was there was a little bit of or a substantial amount of uh excess from the Measure R project on Avenue four-sixteen, so we've worked with uh TCAG and the Measure R group to move that money over into the two-eighty project, and we're actually forecasting a little bit more savings on four-sixteen as well, hoping that everything goes accordingly. We don't get a huge spike in gas prices, which drives up asphalt costs, and so if that does occur, then we'll work with TCAG again to move that further savings back into two-eighty again. Uh the project cost is the same, it's that sixteen million. Um you can see the breakdowns, the design, right-of-way, construction and construction engineering costs. Um I think we've been pretty efficient as far as design and what we're predicting for construction engineering being about ten percent of the costs. Um that's probably about half of what you would see for a lot of similar types of projects, so I think I'm pretty pleased with the efficiencies that we've seen there. Um right-of-way, we're estimating to close that out at a little over two million. We've got two parcels left, one is um in the order of possession stage going through the courts, and then the final was uh for the right-of-way or for the easement for the basin that we'll be picking up. Um so we've got some estimates in there, but we think that that'll come in pretty closely at that cost. Um I mentioned the oil index fluctuations. We have a half a million dollars in the actual construction estimate, um kind of as a contingency for the event that oil prices do go up, so if gas prices stay about where they're at, we would expect to see about a half million dollars of savings on top of that, and then there's
They'll stay where they're at until November first, and then you're gonna see a
Luckily, it's that's only gas prices at the tank, so this is this is the oil prices here at the the crude oil costs. Um and then a contingency of about six hundred thousand dollars there. Um so there is a bit of a hit to the road fund in this, uh it's a, you can see it here, it's a uh one point two-four million dollars, so kinda considering all those hopeful savings that we see, um and through proactive management, the goal is to reduce the impact to the county roads fund, and then we can reapply those funds to kinda the basics, the maintenance, the potholes that we uh, you know, we have throughout the county, so those savings that we could see um on these two regional projects hopefully get relayed back into distribution throughout the county for maintenance. Um with that, I'd like to thank the Board Supervisors. As I said, this has been a long project, it's been ongoing. I know I was here making a presentation on the early environmental documents in two thousand eleven, so we've come back, you've seen this project ongoing, so thank you to your board, thank you to the County Administrative Officer, he's been heavily involved in this since his time at RMA, but still uh heavily involved with this at his position currently. Um absolutely, a big thanks goes to TCAG and the group with Measure R, without them, neither four-sixteen, this project, and so many other projects that we do would be possible. Um city of Visalia, there is a portion of this project within the city of Visalia, so we've worked closely with their engineering staff and team, they've been reviewing the plans, and they've been very helpful working with us. Um all the utility companies, but primarily Southern California Edison, this project impacts them, so they've been working closely with us, and we're hoping for a smooth uh completion to that. Uh Tulare Irrigation District and other uh municipality or agency that's very good to work with. Omni Means Engineers is the designer on this project, so I'd like to thank them. And then, not last but not least, our RMA staff who's favorite stand-up back there. Uh we've got Mike Winton, who is actually from Omni Means Engineers. He liked working with Javed Khan and Hernan Beltran so much that he's come over and joined us at RMA now. So um they've definitely been pushing this project through and heavily involved with it, so thank you to them as well. Um with that, like I say, we've got two uh request items here. The first would be uh reaffirm the findings of the EIR, approve the plans and the specifications and the contract, and then the authorize the chairman to sign and let us go out and advertise the bids for the project.
Uh just a quick comment, I I do wanna say thank you to our staff uh for their perseverance on this project. I know that we had hit several road bumps uh along the way, and obviously it's been a lengthy process, six years to get to this point uh from the initial presentation at the Board, maybe even longer. Um but I also do want to uh reiterate some uh kudos and appreciation to uh the ad hoc committee process. I know that uh there was an ad hoc committee of myself and Supervisor Cox that got involved uh with Southern California Edison when we were having some issues with the uh pole relocations, um and uh really brought everybody to the table and uh had some great communications, and from that point forward, uh this project actually was not looking like it was going to make our construction timeframes uh that we have proposed in front of us, and and today we now see that we are on track and we're gonna be moving forward, so uh there again, we don't necessarily have dollars to show for it, although you can uh deduce dollar savings, but uh it was a very, very good process and uh yielded some real benefits, so um really happy to see this project move forward. Any of my colleagues have any questions?
Sure, I was gonna ask about the how the progress has been made in Edison, apparently dissatisfactorily, that's why we're here today, I take it then.
Absolutely, yeah, they're looking, uh like I say, kinda the latter half of the summer here to move forward. One of the big, it wasn't in the numbers like you mentioned, but um when they initially came to us, it looked like the cost for moving all of those poles, which was multiple millions of dollars, was going to be on the county, and through working closely with them and going back into the initial deeds and easements, it resulted that only one pole was actually at the cost of the county, so big savings there.
Go ad hoc. And I'm sorry, I meant to say, Ennis, I said Cox, I don't know why.
That's okay.
Yeah, you just didn't look so happy down there.
Yeah.
I didn't wanna make you even angrier.
Uh one last, one last.
I don't need any applause or anything, I just do my job.
One, one, one last comment, uh timing, I think, is gonna be critical. I mean, you look at this this latest tax increase for on fuel and everything, and it's a little bit into the futures, so it's pushing off projects, but I can say once, once that money starts hitting the cities and the counties and the state of California, you're gonna see a lot more competition, or actually fewer people competing for jobs, I think, going forward, and we'll be back in the kind of thing we normally have experienced in the past where the cost of projects is probably gonna be going up because you're gonna have so many projects and not enough people doing the job, so very important to move this project forward now, take advantage of that window of opportunity, and I'd be glad to move approval of the first item, maybe we need to take two separate actions, I think, but move approval of the uh EIR requirement under item twenty-three.
All right, we have a motion uh by Supervisor Worthley and a second by my second ad hoc committee member Supervisor Ennis, and a quick question from Supervisor Crocker before we vote.
Oh, I didn't say quick. I uh so what's, we're looking at, this is segment one.
Yes.
So do we know what are, what a ballpark estimate for the entire project?
It it's a few years out, so the full project was broken up into phases in the Measure R work plan. Um there were a couple of other STIP-related projects that are in there too, so with this new transportation funding bill, we're hoping that some of that will go to kinda fill the backlog on the STIP side of things and advance the latter phases, the phase two and three of this, but it's still probably a four or five years out at the earliest, I would guess.
The STIP projects, I assume, would be like the interchange?
The widening of ninety-nine and so forth, yeah.
Um and then, so the somewhat unrelated, the farm-to-market projects, Avenue one-forty-four, and is that Avenue two-eighty as well?
That's Avenue two-eighty as well, on the other side of ninety-nine.
On the other side, right, okay. That's, I just wanted to make sure, yeah.
And that one, I believe we're opening bids tomorrow, the twenty-eighth.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, uh please vote. Up, and is there any public comment uh on uh this item before we formalize the vote? Okay, seeing none, motion passes unanimously. We're now gonna move on to uh item number twenty-five on the agenda.
We have two, we got four.
Oh, I'm sorry, twenty-four.
Move approval, move, pass it.
My bad.
Second.
We have a motion by Supervisor Worthley, a second by Supervisor Crocker, any public comment regarding the uh twenty-four is the uh actual action, not just the EIR?
On the funding.
On on the funding. Okay, seeing none. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we're gonna move on to item number twenty-five, which is a presentation given by the Resource Management Agency based on the findings set forth in Exhibit B made a part hereof the Board Supervisors Resolution twenty seventeen dash zero-two-zero-five to deny the appeal filed by Mr. Robert Mata and affirm the Planning Commission's approval of the special use permit uh for a contractor storage yard.
Thank you, Chairman, Board Members, Mr. CAO, County Council, Mike Washam, Tulare County RMA, and we'll get the PowerPoint going in just a second. I apologize for the late delivery of the um PowerPoint printouts. My truck failed to start this morning and they were sitting there, so I got them late, so I apologize for that. A summary of of the decision regarding this special use project, uh or the denial of the appeal at the pre- our previous uh board meeting, was based on Tulare County and California policy guidelines and laws, documents presented by the appellant and the pa- and responses to those documents, presentations by staff and the appellant, and responses to the letter presented by um Richard Harriman, the lawyer for the appellant. Your Board took the following actions on uh April fourth: received a staff presentation, you opened the public hearing, receiving testimony from both the both the appellant and the appellee, closed the public hearing, by unanimous vote denied the appeal and thereby reaffirming or affirming the Planning Commission's approval of special use permit number PSP sixteen oh twenty-eight, and directed staff to return in two weeks with final findings in response to the letter submitted by Richard Harriman on April third, and that's why we are here today to respond to Mr. Harriman's letter. Mr. Harriman's letter can really be broken down into five uh segments. The first one, induct- in introductory statement of facts regarding some of the timing of our enforcement practices. The next three are more SEQA-related, and finally the fourth or the fifth one is uh some proposed conditions of approvals. So we'll just walk. Mr. Harriman incorrectly contended that there was a lapse of enforcement of code enforced uh code violation, since the violation was first opened in February and the applicant didn't apply for the curative special use permit until June of two thousand sixteen. Now, it became to the county's attention that there was a violation uh occurring on this property. We, our inspectors first went out on February third, and on February fifth, the applicant submitted the first building permit, application for the C train, so there was an immediate action not delayed. There was further noticing going out, we went to the uh PRC Committee in uh May twelfth, which um is the first step of becoming uh able to submit for the uh the special use permit, so the Mr. Harriman failed to recognize that there was other steps in the process through this time, there wasn't a gap of enforcement. Finally, um they did apply uh for the special use permit in June, and the applicant applied for as-built building permits on November fifteenth. The reason there's a delay between the June and the and the um November date is because these structures were already constructed and requiring engineered design drawings uh and renderings made for us to approve that, so that's why there was a slight uh time delay there. At the uh May twelfth uh PRC meeting, staff's research indicated that there was a reasonable probability and expectation that the project would be deemed as categorically exempt. Nevertheless, none of the ministerial building permit violations required any SEQA to remedy. The letter contends that the proper notice wasn't given to agencies since there was no mention made that the applicant had had already filled in approximately two acres in a seasonal wetland, subject to jurisdiction of the Army Corps of Engineers and the Central Valley Water Quality Control Board. Staff contends that proper consultation notices regarding the project were sent to the responsible agencies, and we agree, no mention of the filling of the seasonal wetlands was given because there are is no evidence of seasonal wetlands existing on the parcel. Mr. Harriman contends that the category exemption is improper based on the significant effect exemption in the state guidelines for SEQA that states, "A category exemption shall not be used where there is a reasonable possibility that the activity will have a significant effect on the environment due to unusual circumstances." Mr. Harriman alleges, without producing any evidence, that wetlands were filled on the site. As lead agency, Tulare County has found no project impacts that qualify as significant. Staff presents the following evidence that the site contains no wetlands and no seasonal stream, Antelope Creek or any other flows across the site. This is the first, this is a map of uh the USGA, the jet, USGS map of waterways of the United States. You can see the site, the Antelope Creek is off to the east and south of the site, as well as another off to the west. This is our GIS, our county GIS, a layer that shows repairing areas, and again, it's nothing's identified on the site. This is a a combination of the two parcel maps that were um approved back in nineteen seventy-six, seventy-five, that show the the channelization of the Antelope Creek off to the project to the um to the southeast on another parcel, and uh again, there's no seasonal creek or wetland identified on the parcel. This is a US Fish and Wildlife Service National Wetlands Inventory Map. As you can see, the site there, there's no uh no wetlands identified there. You can see the closest one is off to the um to the southwest, approximately low over a quarter mile. There's another one about a half mile to the south, and the nearest to the east is probably three-quarters of a mile. So again, there's no wetlands on the on the site. Mr. Harriman contends that the category exemption is improperly based on the cumulative impact exemption that states, "A category exemption is inapplicable when the cumulative impact of successive projects in the same place over time is significant." His letter goes on to state that since the time of the subdivision in nineteen seventy-six, the air quality in the south San Joaquin Valley has deteriorated to a status of extreme non-attainment. Staff's response would be that the mere existence of significant cumulative impacts caused by other projects alone shall not constitute substantial evidence that the project's incremental effects are cumulatively considered. There has been no successful uh projects at this site. Full consultation notices were sent to the Air District, Caltrans, Fish and Wildlife, Regional Quality Control Board, and the city of Woodlake. No regulatory agency indicated the project would exceed any SEQA thresholds, much less require cumulative studies. Finally, uh Mr. Harriman contends that an inadvertent comment from an in an inner-office staff memo from from Craig Anderson to Dana Metlin, our our planner, requires the preparation of a traffic study and either a negative deck or an EIR. The the comment was uh off of a template templated uh response memo that says, "Based on information the consultant notice package, negative deck or an EIR is recommended to assess the impacts to the road system." Mr. Anderson is is an engineer, he's not a SEQA expert, as to what level of SEQA analysis may or may not be required. Uh furthermore, the comment was an inadvertent error, as further evidenced by his silence when given the opportunity to raise any concerns regarding SEQA and potential impacts to the roads at at both the PRC meeting as well as the Planning Commission meeting. Project doesn't generate enough traffic to exceed the general plan's threshold of a hundred peak hour trips. Project doesn't generate Caltrans's fifty peak hour trips to warrant a traffic study under SEQA. Caltrans has reviewed the consultation package and stated the project will have minimal impact on the state highway system, and Caltrans has no comment regarding the project. Mr. Harriman's letter failed to mention that the memorandum uh states, and goes on to state, that the Ward Street is a private, non-maintained county uh road, not a county road, and concludes with the following, "We have no recommended conditions for the subject case." Finally, the the letter proposes reasonable remedies by way of a series of conditions of approval in the event that the Board did not agree to prepare a an EIR or mitigated negative deck. The proposed conditions include, but not limited to, requiring the entire contractor storage yard be enclosed in an enclosed environment such as a completely enclosed metal building with HVAC and a filtration system, requiring that all uh of the vehicles use biodiesel or other alternative fuels, obtaining alternative or amended easements for the prop- from the property owners. Uh staff would say that those proposed conditions are are particularly onerous. Staff would say that those proposed conditions are particularly onerous and fully infeasible. As approved by the Planning Commission, the project must comply with over twenty-three conditions of approval. I would just like to finalize by stating that staff has reached out to Mr. Mata and asked, he has the conditions of approval there, that we're going to be going out on a monthly inspection as the first year. We've talked to him about any specific impacts that he's concerned with, be it lighting or dust or that, that to bring those up, and that we'll work with the applicant on addressing those concerns. Again, the conditions of approval that the Planning Commission sought fit to include are reasonable for this type of project and similar to all the similar type projects in the county. With that, I would conclude with the requested action, as read in your packet, based on the final findings set forth in the attached Exhibit B made part hereof, affirm the Board of Supervisors Resolution twenty seventeen oh two oh five to deny the appeal filed by Robert Mata and affirm the Planning Commissioner's approval of special use permit number P S P sixteen oh twenty-eight for contractor storage yard.
All right. Any questions or comments from Board Members?
I don't have any.
Questions or comments under the public comment section of this item. Okay, seeing no public comment, we will bring it back to the Board for action.
We'll for approval to deny the appeal.
Having a motion from Supervisor Anderson, second by Supervisor Crocker, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. We are now going to move on to item number twenty-six on our agenda, a request from the Board of Supervisor staff to receive input and provide direction in regards to the twenty-seventeen federal legislative priorities, and I'll turn it over to Senora Martinez.
Julieta Martinez, Chief of Staff for the Tulare County Board of Supervisors. I will briefly walk through the federal legislative priorities for our annual advocacy trip to Washington, D.C. We tend to simply focus on the topics that are most concerned to us year by year and what we are planning to meet with our legislators at the Capitol. So, payment in lieu of taxes, and I won't read through the whole slide since this is in your packet, but currently, California received nearly forty-seven million in PIL payments, based on forty-four million acres of federal land in fifty-seven and fifty-eight counties. This was for last year. We contain over one-point-five million acres of federally-owned land and rely on PIL funding to partially offset the loss of tax revenue created by this federal ownership. Most of our funding is used to maintain critical services, and without it, the county would be forced to reduce public safety personnel and other services. Our public safety departments are already stretched to their limits with increased responsibilities resulting from the two thousand and eleven realignment. Separately, our county is experiencing severe impacts to the effects of the drought. Like Supervisor Worthley said earlier, the drought may be over, but we're still feeling the effects. Combinations of these factors eliminates our ability to absorb PIL cuts without significant impacts to the community. We are urging Congress to support full funding, which is at four hundred eighty million, for federal PIL fiscal year two thousand and seventeen. And if you have any questions during, please let me know. SCAP, federal government is ultimately responsible for immigrant enforcement, including the incarceration of undocumented criminal offenders. When that's not possible, the law requires the federal government to compensate state and local government for their costs. Although SCAP has decreased dramatically in recent years, the costs incurred by our local law enforcement has increased significantly. Tulare County received over five hundred fifty thousand in funding for fiscal year two thousand and sixteen, which represents approximately sixteen percent, please excuse, oh, I corrected it up there, of its correctional staff-associated costs to incarcerate undocumented criminals. In the absence of adequate reimbursement from the federal government, Tulare County is forced to divert limited local resources from other essential programs, including crime prevention and public safety initiatives. Tulare County requests reauthorization of the SCAP program at nine hundred fifty million the prior authorized level. Success Dam, which is really the Success Reservoir Enlargement Project, has been in the work since nineteen ninety-nine. It is currently, I believe, still a dam safety action classification rating of three, which is considered high priority, and has been moving towards a D S A C four, which is priority but considered marginally safe. The project at some point was on hold for ten years because there were concerns from the Army Corps of Engineers regarding the safety of the dam. They performed a seismic analysis of the dam and determined that there is no longer a safety risk. Our local Congressman Kevin McCarthy has stated that with the recent rain, this is an example of why raising the Success Dam spillway is so important. Raising the spillway will increase the capacity of Success Lake in a safe manner, and would enable us to capture more water from current storms to hold for future use. Raising the spillway will add about twenty-eight thousand acre feet to what the dam can hold. Capacity right now would be at eighty-two thousand five hundred acre feet, but a possible increase could hold at a hundred ten thousand acre feet. Original cost, once upon a time, were at nineteen million, but it's looking closer to thirty-five million. That's not a steady number. If it were to raise, we would potentially have to go back to Congress for additional funding. There's an updated safety study that will be finished this spring, and the enlargement will be reevaluated. The study is slated to be completed in March of two thousand and eighteen. If all goes well, the timeline to begin construction would be in two thousand and twenty-two, with work taking up to two years to complete. The Success Reservoir Enlargement Project has been on this Board's priority list for some years with one of your Board Members included in a tri-J P A that works specifically towards this project, and we want to continue to support funding and just continue to gather support from local legislators for the increase in the spillway. Water supply recharge, millions of Californians south of the Delta are dependent upon Central Valley project water to serve their ag, municipal, industrial, environmental needs. The reduction in surface water deliveries has resulted in a greater dependence on groundwater, overdraft of our aquifers, subsidence that has harmed our infrastructure, and additional hardships for our rural disadvantaged communities. Projects such as the Temperance Flat Reservoir can help address these challenges. With the goal being a proposed dam on the San Joaquin River, the main purpose would be to supplement storage capacity in the upper San Joaquin River Basin. It would more than double water storage on the river, and this year, because of the Friant's small capacity, we've had to start doing early flood releases. Goals of projects for water supply such as Temperance Flat Dam and the reservoir would be to improve management of flood flows for groundwater recharge in the Friant Division, enhance water temperature and flow conditions in the San Joaquin River, increase recapture of the San Joaquin River restoration flows, and more. Recently, we had four water agencies signing an agreement in support and cooperation of the Temperance Flat Reservoir, and we're trying to gather support not only from our local legislators here in Sacramento, but at the Capitol, because this truly is a project that would be beneficial to not just the Central Valley, but extends to other areas of California. As far as the state project, we talked about this in March, there is a completed application that is due April fourteenth to the California Water Commission, but we are also working with the U S Bureau of Reclamation to develop an operations plan. I'm going to grant application and are seeking support from our federal government for these type of projects that benefit all residents in the Central Valley.
I was thinking that we might want to somehow highlight Temperance Flat, and so like, if you could go back to that previous one, where you say water supply slash recharge, I think maybe we would put right up there the same size, put a, put a.
Specific point, Temperance.
Yeah, I was going to say, put a, I don't want to say, a colon, colon, and then put Temperance Flat, because I think that really is, when you look at the federal government's side of this, there are other projects, but they're probably going to be funded more locally through the water bond, there's different subsections of the water bond for other smaller projects, but when we're looking at the federal government aspect of it, it really is focused on Temperance Flat. And I think the request is for, it's the, it's the, what's before appropriation?
Authorization.
It's authorization and appropriation. That's what we're really looking for from Congress, is authorization for the construction and then appropriated dollars to help build it.
So, forest management has been another hot topic that we also included in our state platform and continue to include on our federal platform, getting to the notes, and it really comes down to active management on national forests, and the question has always come back to, how will we manage the forest going forward? As you can see from the stats that we've repeated when we went to Sacramento in March, to date, there's a hundred-one million dead or dying trees that have been found within eighteen California counties, with an estimate of two hundred forty acres with new conifer mortality, estimated eight-point-one million dead or dying trees in Tulare County alone. Like I said previously, Enio, Sequoia, Sierra Forest Plan revisions were brought forward at the end of last year with comments from Tulare County. We were seeking a more aggressive manner to address treatment in the forest lands. That report has yet to be released. We were looking at August of this year, it might potentially be pushed back. Part of the problem was, we were looking at a forest previous to the four years of the drought, so we weren't really looking at the facts and what it looked like to date. The concern has always been our constituents at risk in the present, feeling the effects of the drought, and we're looking for options, like the use of the biomass facilities, export out of our forests and federal lands. And another topic not listed here but correlates is the wildfire suppression that's going on. There's been a lot of federal, state, and local funding to fight wildfires, and part of the issue at the federal level sometimes has been fire borrowing, where we're taking money from forest management accounts to deal with wildfire suppression, but again, that leaves us weak, and how do we address management in the national forests? So, we are looking for support, funding, authorization, appropriations, to augment ongoing pest and disease tree removal, fire prevention. If you'd like, we can add in there legislation supporting the exportation of logs. Farm-to-market, we are usually on par, talking to our Tulare County Association of Governments on some of their transportations. Farm-to-market is something we'd like to continue in support of them and in collaboration, just with the use of the roads, like it lists up here, dairy industry plays a major part in the economy, provides five percent of all milk consumed in the United States. I prefer whole milk myself, but thanks. Hundreds of gallons of milk are produced every day from each over the three hundred sixty dairies in Tulare County. All of it is transported by truck over county roads, and so, you know, it's a great thing, we're getting milk, we're producing dairy, business is booming, but it is harmful to our roadways, so we're always advocating along with T C A G for funding for these rural roads. I know other years we've had the goods movement, they seem to be doing good moving forward, got a lot of congressional support, so farm-to-market is something we'd like to have on there.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
I do think, I appreciate this whole concept, but it ought to be a little bit more broadly stated than just dairies, because actually, it's the criteria of how much truck traffic you have. And I use as an example, Wawona, having located their primary resources in Cutler, and they now utilize that facility twelve months out of the year, because between tree fruit and citrus, this thing operates, you know, every day of the year practically, and there's big trucks on these limited numbers of roads every day. They're much like dairies, in the sense that we used to think about dairies because they run these trucks every day, where we tend to think more about other parts of the county as being seasonal, but it's changed, so it's really, the criteria should be, how much truck traffic do we have on a given roadway? It may come from, you know, other sources of agriculture, or it may, besides dairies, but that really is the.
Well, and I really do think, I'm not opposed to making that change, but I think we do keep it as ag truck traffic, because ag, having that one word in there opens the possibility for farm bill-type funding, or gaining a coalition that we're seeking, that goes across the United States, that spans agriculture, so, not just truck.
Yeah, no, I was going to make that same suggestion, and I think that if it's, you know, true farm-to-market, whatever agriculture, then there's better opportunities to gain support nationwide, because not every part of the country has a dairy industry, so.
And not every district in our county has a dairy industry.
But, you know, citrus is big, and those trucks use the roads.
And the way the citrus industry has changed, it's almost a new run industry.
Right, so if it's a juicing facility.
I think it's just, just do any ag, farm-to-market.
Last but not least, marijuana eradication on public lands, it has a question mark, this wasn't actually in your packet to begin with, so this is in addition, and so, it basically comes down to California, following the lead of some other states, has legalized the use of recreational marijuana. However, there's been a lot of talk and concerns that the illegal cultivation on our public lands is not going to go away. Most likely, it is going to increase. There is a slight chance that people who grow it illegally may not want to pay a tax or pull permit, or, you know, follow the law, and so, we want to support reimbursement or funding for law enforcement operations on public lands in order to remediate cultivation sites. In the past, we might have local law enforcement who has been forced to go up there and actually do some removal themselves. That doesn't always mean that we've recovered all those costs, and then again, with the wildfire suppression and the forest management, and there was actually a bill to possibly get rid of the law enforcement aspect of the Forest Service. It's at a standstill, it's not moving forward right now, but there's people who have actually considered that, and that would actually be harmful to us, because we already want them to pay us back for the work done, and so, this is more of a question mark. If you want to add it in there, since it wasn't in your packet, we can.
You know, just to put my thoughts on that, I would say that this is absolutely a time that we want to mention this, because we have seen the growth sites on public lands and on federal lands fluctuate year over year, but especially in a good water year, I think there's a good chance that there's going to be an increase in cultivation on public lands, federal lands, lands that we don't own, and we don't, we have jurisdiction on a law enforcement basis over, but we need their help, we need collaboration, and regardless of it being legal in the state of California, I don't think that the growers that typically grow on public lands are even concerned about the legal environment of California. They're going to be doing it on an illegal basis anyways, so, that would be my thought.
Well, yeah, and it's going to continue, it's going to continue on the valley floor, too. So, this is not something that's going to change, but federal lands, at least one thing, hopefully, they're going to stick out like a sore thumb up there in all those dead trees.
Yeah.
But, no, it's going to continue on, and like you were saying, in a wet year, it's probably going to go completely out of sight. So, we need funds.
Yep.
Okay.
Europe needs funds.
Anybody have any, any of my colleagues have an additional comment about the legislative priorities, or have any feedback, Supervisor Crocker?
I just, from, I'd be supportive of the marijuana, just because, and I think it's important to note, not only from the law enforcement and the public safety standpoint, but include in there the environmental concerns, and the fact that I think, for the most part, we're dealing with cartels when they're, when they're growing up in the forest lands, on public lands. I just want to emphasize on the water supply that I think there's additional opportunity to include or look at some type of increasing of capacity of existing facilities. I think that we probably missed out on an opportunity to have some type of dredging of the lakes that are already in existence to increase capacity during the last drought, and I don't, I know a meeting with some folks up at Lake Kawea that there wasn't really a whole lot of maintenance, and a lot of that's just because of funding, and so, I think that's probably a less controversial aspect of increasing capacity for our communities and for our farmers, but it's something that can be done in a relatively quick aspect, and that's something that we should probably highlight as well. And then, I guess, the only other question I would have for the Board is, I know we talk about air quality on a lot of different aspects, I know that the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District, and Supervisor Worthley, you already advocate regularly in Washington, but is that something that we want to highlight, or maybe just mention or something because of the possible impacts of the P M two-point-five?
I think it's a good idea, I hadn't thought about it, because I've been so actively engaged with the Air Board, but I think it would be a bad idea for us to have it on our list also, just to support, because if the P M two-point-five, if we don't get those things changed, are going to have major impacts on our road projects, on our economic development in the county, so it is a very critical issue, and it's sooner than we think.
Right.
So, that's, I think, I appreciate.
So that's, I think, I appreciate that for you bringing that up, Tyler. I think we should have it. You might check with the Air Board to get, the main thing we were trying to get done is there's a bill by Pete Olson from Texas that would, we're hoping to have language put in there that would say, notwithstanding our being not in conformity with the current rules regarding PM 2.5, if their finding is made that the violation is caused by sources outside the jurisdiction of the Air District, the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District, that we would not be subject to sanctions. That's the magic language, because 80% of our air pollution comes from mobile sources which we have no power to control.
All right. Any additional comments from my colleagues? Any public comments regarding this? Okay, who we have to please?
So thank you for your input and suggested changes. And if you are on agreements, I ask that you please approve the suggested list of county priorities, including the addition with the marijuana enforcement on public lands, the cost recovery, and the addition of the air quality highlighting and mentioning PM 2.5 with additional information to come forward.
And you made some other changes too, so I would move that we approve it as amended.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion by Supervisor Worley, a second by Supervisor Anis. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. All right, at this time, we are going to break for lunch. I was waiting to see Sheriff Boudreau's look right there. He stopped his conversation.
He's got to go. He said, long as you're buying.
He wasn't too happy about that. All right, we are now going to move on and take up item number 27 on our agenda. It's a request from the Sheriff's Department to approve a personnel resolution adding one assistant sheriff position allocation to the Sheriff's Office effective April 30th, 2017. And there are four presenters moving forward, so. Go ahead.
I'll be quick though.
Okay.
Going to waste some time while Captain Douglas loads the presentation. Well, I guess it's not really morning anymore, but hello, Board Supervisors, Chairman, CAO, and County Council. We're here today to give you this presentation. In a few minutes, I'll be introducing Captain Keith Douglas and Captain Tom Sigley to provide you a presentation on this request for an additional assistant sheriff with the Tulare County Sheriff's Department. Mr. Spata was pointing at something, I thought maybe you can hear me.
IT.
Oh, IT. We really appreciate you listening to us today. You know.
We appreciate your patience.
Sure. And I would have welcomed lunch, by the way.
And you know, on a 27.
It's motivation for you to get through.
That's an oki coming out of you.
That's right, that's right. Supervisor Anis.
Twenty-seven item agenda, we didn't think would go this long, so my apologies.
That's right. Well, anyway, they prepared this presentation for you, but before they get started and then before I introduce them, I would like to explain to you a little bit about my roles under sheriff with the Sheriff's Department with the current command structure that we have. Currently, we have six captains in executive command, one assistant sheriff and one undersheriff, which is my position. Three captains report to the assistant sheriff, and in turn, the assistant sheriff reports to me along with the other three captains in our agency. And the importance of this new command structure for us with two assistant sheriffs would be a more steady and consist consistent flow of information that comes to me at the undersheriff level so that I can provide that information to Sheriff Mike Boudreau every morning. Sheriff Boudreau is a very busy and involved sheriff. He requires me to brief him daily on what's going on within our organization, and in turn, I expect a daily briefing on what's going on in every division in our Sheriff's Department every morning. Sheriff Boudreau keeps his finger on the pulse of the agency and the community, and in turn, he provides me information from the community so that I can effectively run this organization to meet the needs of the community that we serve. So that's how the Sheriff's Department currently works. It would be a better and more steady flow of information after we look at this analysis that the two captains have done and will present to you, to have the two assistant sheriffs and that information coming through them and then to my level when I could brief the, keep the sheriff informed from that point. So that's why we've done this. The sheriff has always been very supportive and complimentary of the board, and we really appreciate you taking the time to look at this today and to consider this justification that you're going to receive. At the end of the presentation, Sheriff Boudreau will close for you. So with that, we'd like to introduce Captain Tom Sigley and Captain Keith Douglas.
Good afternoon now, Board, Council, CAO. The reason you don't have a printout in front of you is we did not use PowerPoint. We changed to something called Prezi. I don't know if you've heard it, but it's new upcoming innovative technology we're using, so we're going to give it a shot here for you guys.
Get a gun without the picture in there.
This, uh.
We're going to hear from him in a few minutes, I mean, come on.
This first picture here that you see is the outline of the county. And what we want to outline here is kind of what encompasses the sheriff and what he oversees and what he deals with on a day-to-day basis. And you'll see where the chiefs of police throughout the county, different bargaining groups, different civil rights groups, social groups, Lions, same kind of groups you guys all deal with as well. And inside that white circle, you'll see we label it to undersheriff. And what we want to outline here is all these circles, it may look confusing at first, but let me get to the point here. Each circle signifies a captain. We currently have three captain positions who report to an assistant sheriff, which is currently vacant. But right now, all these, all of these people and all of this information is being funneled straight to the undersheriff, which is an overwhelming amount of information. As the undersheriff touched on, we have to, the sheriff requires daily briefings, sometimes multiple briefings into the middle of the night because he wants to know what's going on within the office of the sheriff. So all this information is just flowing up to, right now, what we have is one undersheriff. And you'll see in this chart here, kind of what we're dealing with as far as our current structure. Go to the next one. Back out Elizabeth, please, back up one. I wanted to touch on the, no, overview of patrol.
Getting dizzy.
Overview of patrol.
Motion sickness. Motion sickness.
Patrol. Okay, right here.
He's messing with you now, Captain. He's messing with you now.
He's just messing with you.
What I wanted to touch base on here is the sheriff has done something that's never been done within the history of the Sheriff's Office, is we've taken and analyzed different datas, calls for service, and we've restructured our beat lines, which we've never done. So what we're doing now is basically data-driven policing. If we go into the headquarters area, which is going to be the Acres Project when it's up and running, it will be basically west of 99 and along the 99 corridor. And then we'll also be operating our VIPs, our CBO program, and, go to the next one. And then we'll be still running our operations out of Visaya Sub, which will be our borough location. We currently, excuse me, we currently have a JAG charter school under the Visaya Sub, our VIPs, our CBO program. We also run our Quad Patrol, which is St. John's out of Visaya Sub going on to Cutler. We have, again, our CBO programs, our SRO programs, our VIPs, and the beats. What we did is we redrew the beats through current resources. We basically, you know, the sheriff's very diligent about doing more with less, and this is a prime example of what we did, is we're using our resources with what we have based off the data we have. So we're able to do it. Moving on to the South County, Porterville Substation, which has the majority of our mountain communities and resident deputies. They also have our reservation, which one thing we're looking at in the future is the possibility of this new casino going online and what kind of increase if any of the services that we're going to face with that. Going into Pixie Substation, again, the explosion of the growth in early March, you know, is going to have an effect at some point on our services. So we're keeping that in mind again. That's why we're going with our data-driven policing. Next one. Currently, we have two night watch commanders, one who oversees our weekends and one who oversees weekdays. They each have an ancillary duty. Our weekend commander oversees the explorer program, and our weekday commander oversees our field training program. Currently, this is my unit right now, professional standards and compliance. And we'll go into the first bubble, you'll see some of what, this unit here, the Employee in Public Relations Unit, it's brand new. Sheriff created it last year, and one of the things he wanted to do in creating this unit was the transparency of the agency. He wanted us to be transparent, he wanted the employees to know what's going on within the agency, he wanted the community to know what's going on within the agency. So we created this Employee Public Relations Unit. With that, we added a community liaison, and currently it's, her name's Liz, and what she does is she's giving anywhere from three to five to seven presentations every single week at one social group, town council, city council, letting the community know what the Sheriff's Office is doing. We have our Sheriff's News, which is an internal briefing that goes out. We have our Portal, which is a weekly that goes out to our employees. We've added our Public Information Officer, and one of the big things that's been very successful under this unit has been Deputy Busby. We've reached over 60,000 kids with this program. They love him.
And you do a good job.
And no, it's not me, Pete.
That's, Chuckley said it was you, Tom.
That's nice there.
Also, also, we participate in most of the parades we can get into, just to get ourselves out there with the community. Go ahead. Under this division is also our volunteer groups, which includes the Sheriff's Posse, Chaplains, the Arrow Squadron. This is also new, sheriff created. Basically, what we've done is we've created two compliance positions, one for operations, one for detentions. Under the compliance, one of their functions is tracking any legislative bills that are going through that's going to affect us, which there's significant amount of bills that go through, as you guys know. One of the prime things on our compliance is making sure our agency is within 21st century policing. And part of what that is, is maintaining our relationship with our community, policy and oversight, making sure our policies are the latest in law enforcement as far as the trend of what's going on. Technology and social media, we're on the top of our technology as far as law enforcement goes in our agency, as well as community policing, crime prevention, officer safety, and accountability. Same thing on the jail side. Everything I just said, I could repeat for the detention side because we're doing it. We have basically two huge divisions, which is one of the reasons we are pushing so hard right now for the urgency of adding this position. You know, we're not just sitting, waiting for the radio to go off taking 911 calls. We have a lot going on, we've got a lot of projects going on. Go to the next one. We have also under this division is Emergency Services, which, this is also brand new to the Sheriff's Office. We've taken over boating enforcement on Lake Keweeah, on Lake Success, and on the King's River. This is a quick snippet. You know, when we took this program over, one of the things we had to do is consolidate, think globally as far as what we had, as far as positions. We received four positions for that, for a unit that minimally takes eight to run, but we're getting by with what we have right now. Also, under this unit is a search and rescue, Homeland Security, Office of Emergency Services with RODER, mutual aid, as well as our dive team. And this is, this is one of the things our dive, our dive team will do. This is a weapon recovery search up in the lake.
Pretty clean down there. Odable water.
Okay, also, under this division is our aviation unit, which is new and upcoming. We're looking at our new aircraft acquisition, which is going to be a Cessna 182. We're also adding our drone, our response officers, which there will be one at each substation, kind of like a K-9, where they'll respond to traffic, and if they have to deploy it, it's right there to deploy. This is a sample of what the drone does with the FLIR. On the left, you'll see the K-9 officer, and out of that shed, you'll see somebody take off running. There's, that is a training video. Go ahead, the next one. Here's the big one, and really, this bubble encompasses really why you can justify adding this second position. We have so many huge projects going on that, I mean, these, there's decisions that need to be made on these projects that go to the highest level. But taking on all these projects kind of pulls the captain from his daily functions of what he should be overseeing. As you all know, we have our Acres Project going on, our new property and evidence project going on. We're looking at redoing the Visaya Substation, moving the dispatch up to where our records are, our CFIU remodel, as well as under this is new vehicle acquisitions. Currently, investigations broken into four units. Crimes Against Person, which incorporates our crimes against children, our violent crimes, or commonly known as our homicide unit, our investigations clerical, and as well as, we all know, our child internet safety and human trafficking. And you've seen in some of the billboards we've done and put up, we've gotten a lot of response from the public about it. We're pushing hard on our child internet safety presentations. We have, in EPRU, we have an officer who's doing four to five a week at every one of our elementary schools, getting the information out. Go to the next one. CFIU is a brand-new unit. This is another prime example of doing more with less. We've combined our cyber crimes and our crime lab into one unit, and we're tackling, you know, the cyber and the forensics in the same facility, which you guys are helping us remodel. We have our coroner's office under this division, our property and evidence, as well as I already addressed, the crime lab and cyber. Our crimes against property, which incorporates our ag crimes unit, which is always busy. Just an example, some of the recoveries they've done. Our domestic violence safe unit, our elder abuse unit, our North and South County property crimes, as well as this new unit, which Sheriff created using existing staff, which is our catch unit, which we've, that unit has located several, if not, I think we're up to like 50 or 60 fugitives that have been wanted for the sheriff, wanted by the Sheriff's Office since it's been created. I'm sure you guys have seen this along the highway somewhere. This is also new innovative technology that we're implementing, trying to add another tool to our tool belt, which is our Smart Water CSI. Go ahead. Our street crimes unit, which is, incorporates our SWAT team, hostage negotiations, but something else we did, the sheriff did this year, is we consolidated resources with what we have. We combined our gang unit, our narcotics unit, and our step team and developed what we call TAGNET, the Tulare Area Gang and Narcotic Enforcement Team. And we broke it into three teams, north, south, and east, which we've never had a day. which we've never had a dedicated team to the east, which incorporates East Porterville, as well as our Foothill Coffee Camp areas, where they regularly have, you know, gang graffiti and issues up there. One big thing is, the sheriff was huge on, is we are a member of several, go ahead, several task forces, as you'll see on here, which is our Target, HIDA, the DEA Fast, HIDA Meth Task Force, as well as our Central Valley Marijuana Investigative Team. The big thing with these teams is they're a force multiplier. We add a body, but when we need you, we get all eight of you. So, that's thinking a little bit outside the box. He hates me saying the box, but getting rid of the box, thinking a little bit globally, that incorporates the force multiplier and why we participate in so many task forces. We've also added a guy to TRAT from our Ag Unit. Why? Because when we call for him, we get all of TRAT. So, now, our task force in the Ag Unit, when we're going after something, just doubled. Go to the next one.
All right, I'll pick up from here. This currently is the span of control for the vacant Assistant Sheriff position. It contains three divisions, the Administrative Support, Detentions, and Administrative Services. Administrative Support is broken into six units. Jail Planning, which is currently covered by a lieutenant. As you can see, some of the projects that are involved, it's our AB 966 million dollar facility, a project that's currently going. Quick video, if any of you haven't seen the latest going down there. There are standing walls. Like, they just completed Unit 1 the other day. I got an email on that as well. Next up, we have our SB 1022 Project, our North County Project, forty-four million dollars. That is currently in the design, or excuse me, the schematic design phase right now. We're still working out plans, working out budget, working very closely with our county partners to make sure that this meets our needs, but we remain fiscally responsible as well. Mr. Spotta was instrumental in getting our SEQA approved on this project back in its early days, and we appreciate your help on that. Our Jail Services Manager, Carrie Donovan and her crew, under the direction of the sheriff. We have a model kitchen. Our kitchen is used by health services across the state in a detention's environment for cleanliness and effectiveness and efficiency. They, we have tours, I want to say, weekly out there of what can be done by using the least amount of resources possible. She dials her budget almost down to the nickel every single year and saves us millions of dollars in inmate food. Our Fiscal Manager, they oversee accounts receivable, payroll, grant management, and they have direct oversight of our hundred-two million dollar budget. They're also taking the lead on our end-time scheduling. We've worked very closely with county and county IT. And what this will do is this will free up resources. Currently, we use line staff to handle scheduling and payroll. By this automated system, it helps to mitigate that. Therefore, us being able to use those resources in other places that are better suited for them. Our Farm Manager, Tom Gwynn and his crew, currently running the North County Facility. Sheriff Udrow, I'm sure you heard the egg story yourself, but went to the store, dozen, eggs went up, and he decided, you know what, we can figure out a way to save money with this. He is now the example for the state of what we're doing. We're saving over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars just in eggs, just because of an idea that the sheriff had and forward-thinking, hopefully this will come up. And we are currently in full production with six trailers.
That didn't look like a chicken.
Everybody likes, everybody likes, everybody likes the donkey. The donkey is actually there because he keeps like the coyotes and things away from the chickens. Hot on the top, we are going to have a South County Farm at the South County Facility. Tom is going to run cattle there, and we're going to have a garden, just like we do in the North County. Therefore, still, we will have, that facility's a five-hundred-bed facility, but we're going to be producing food there as well to help continue to offset those costs. Our Inmate Programs Manager, we still have one of the leading agencies in inmate programs with AB 109. We've got a little infusion of funding with that. But Cheryl and her team have set forth and gone in, really gone into the 21st century with, this is an anger management class right here, in the pre-trial facility, that one of her teachers facilitate. And then, this one is a computerized GED class that we've been able to do with additional funding. Our Sports Man, our Support Services Manager oversees anything electronic in the sheriff's office. It's basically the sheriff IT on steroids. They manage everything from body-worn cameras to videos in any of our substations or buildings. One of their projects, the sheriff came up with the idea, and it's a great, we're calling it our Community Crime Watch. What we want to do is we want to put an internet-based IP camera in areas of the community and allow community members to log in through the internet and see what's going on in that particular area. They can call into us if they see any suspicious events going on or anything. It's a project in its planning stages now, and we're hoping, over the course of this next year, to get it up and going. This added position would be one of those direct responsibilities to make sure this project gets up and going, gets the traction it needs to get it done. The Administrative Services Division, which is currently the division that I oversee, is, actually only has two lieutenants, but they're two pretty busy lieutenants, in my opinion. Our personnel is the equivalent of county HR. We test over a thousand people a year for different classifications in the sheriff's office, sworn and both support. We're also in charge of all the training for both post and STC, as well as civilian staff. That includes first aid, CPR, and range. The sheriff, being a 21st century thinker, even before the 21st century came in, decided, there's got to be a better way than us going and shooting live bullets every month down at the range. So, he came up with the idea of, let's look at a Use of Force Simulator. And I think all of you have had the opportunity to partake that. If not, please let me know. I'll make sure that that happens. But, basically, the Use of Force Simulator is exactly that. It is a large-scale, real weapon display where, this is one of our trainers with the grand jury, where you're faced with real events. What's nice about it is based on your reaction, the scenario can change. If you have good command presence, that person might be cooperative. If not, it can escalate all the way up to someone pulling a gun. It's kind of vague there, but right next to his right cheek is a revolver. One thing the sheriff wanted to do, being 21st century thinking, is he said, well, I'm tired of sending all my people over to Hanford and CLS at drive time, so we're in the process of procuring two driving simulators. These can be programmed to any vehicle that we need up, including transit vehicles. So, we've come up with the idea, but we're going to be a regional training center. We're going to reach out to our county partners. If they want to do driver's training, we can program their vehicle all the way up to fire trucks. And even if there's something custom, the company can do that. Garbage trucks, any heavy equipment, along with law enforcement vehicles. And just like the Use of Force Simulator, this can be changed with different scenarios based on how you're operating. Second is our Courts. Our Courts are almost a little city in themselves. They see an average of seventy-five thousand people a month come through our court doors. We currently have courthouses in Visalia, Juvenile Court, which is north Visalia. We have Family Support, South County Justice Center, and Dinuba. The Detentions Division, the largest division in the sheriff's office under a single captain. And this would directly fall under the Assistant Sheriff as well. We have the Bob Wily Detention Facility at 690-bed, opened in 1987. And all of our facilities now have video visitation. Video visitation was implemented, the sheriff wanted to reach out into the community to be able to make sure that the community members could visit with their loved ones. Sometimes, it's logistically challenging for someone from South County until it opens to visit. Video visitation, we now have video visitation at Porterville Substation that they can visit freely with anyone in any of our custodial facilities. But, they also can do it via the internet from the comfort of their own home. Our Pre-Trial Facility is a 384-bed facility. It's our maximum. It's unique. It has a transitional housing unit, which means we have a digression, and this where SB 1022 will come in. When the North County Project is completed, that facility will take the place of this. And basically, you start off in a maximum, you come to a medium, and then you come into that, and it has digressing levels of security. So, ultimately, they're in a dormitory style, interacting, and that's where they get reconnected with the community just before they get released. We also have our Body Scanner here, and this is unique. It's a special needs unit. The sheriff identified that mental health is definitely an up-and-coming, has been, in the custodial division. So, what we did is we closed our, one of our housing units, Three Adam and Three Boy. And if you look toward the top, you can see there's kind of a black bar separating up there. That's what we call a rail-to-ceiling fence. And basically, it's a set of bars, and it prevents people from jumping off the top mezzanine level. What that does is, prior to this, we were only able to hold mental health, inmates with mental health issues on the lower floor, they're probably limiting our ability to use a housing unit effectively. By doing this, we've eliminated that, and this is Three Adam. Three Adam is complete. Three Boy is expected to be done by the end of the month. Men's Correctional Facility, our oldest facility, the one that SB 1022 will replace, a 304-bed facility. This is a medium custody facility, and all of our work crews are based out of this facility. It also includes our Daytime Reporting Center. Our main jail, built in 1962, 272-bed maximum security linear-style jail. Linear-style jail is the old jail you see with the narrow hallways, bars, and whatnot. This is a photograph from our booking office, 1974, and it doesn't look that different today. And somebody said that Sergeant on the left kind of looked like Lieutenant Shump, so... So, that's currently Main Jail. This is our video visitation at headquarters. This is where the visitors will come. You can see the display panels. There's three on the left and three on the right. These are current, basically a snapshot of our current jail stats in 2014. You can see we were up, we were in full implementation of AB 109 at this point. We had our maximum that we've ever seen during that time. You can see in the month of October, that was a monthly average of seventeen hundred seventy. You can see as we dropped, going into fifteen, sixteen. But, as you can see by the yellow bar, we are rising back up, and we estimate that we will be returning up to our levels that we have been seen in the past. So, with the opening of South County, we will be able to reallocate some of this. The sheriff's vision for the main jail is, within three years of South County opening, it will no longer be used. It's an inefficient building, and it's inefficient of staff and facilities. It's, the facility, yeah, the facility itself is just not efficient. It's, we're dealing with a building that was built in the 60s. We can't do anything to it. We have asbestos issues, and staffing is very challenging.
This is where we're, this is what we're wanting to get to. This is efficiency. It's handling business. It's a streamlined upward and downward communication, so important and vital information doesn't get missed. We all know that when one person is getting all this information and flooding all this information in, there's an opportunity for something to get missed or misconstrued or whatever. This shows where the sheriff's vision takes us. In doing an analysis, the sheriff wanted us to do an analysis of this. And how we did that was we did some comparables. How we came up with comparables, similar size, shape, form, vicinity, even within internally, our district attorney has the same type of structure, where he has the DA, the chief deputy DA, which would be equivalent to an undersheriff, two assistant DAs, which would be equivalent to two assistant sheriffs. Your vision, when you did your reorg, you saw four. These deputy CAOs would be equivalent to like our assistant sheriff positions. Excuse me, to the south, Kern County, they currently have an undersheriff with four chief deputies, which is equivalent to our assistant sheriff position. To the north, Fresno County, currently operates with an undersheriff and two assistant sheriffs. Ventura County, similar shape, size, it's an undersheriff, excuse me, and two assistant sheriffs. San Joaquin County, just to the north of Fresno, an undersheriff, two assistant sheriffs. And San Mateo has an undersheriff with three assistant sheriffs. And there's numerous other agencies that have it. The span of control and efficiency is what the goal is. Currently, we have our undersheriff, as you know, and one assistant sheriff. We're looking to add this second one, put three captains under both sides, even flow of information going up, same way coming down. It's just more efficient and a better way of operating for a 21st century agency. The urgency and need, we've just given you a snippet of what we're doing and what we have going on. A lot of what we're doing needs the higher level of oversight, as decision-making is important as far as at that admin level. These are just a couple of the items that, as far as sustainability. Every year, we are pushed and pushed and pushed, and we push our staff, be fiscally, fiducially responsible. If you don't need to burn the overtime, don't. And what do we do at the end of the year? We're always giving money back to the county, and we're on target to do that again this year. Why? Because we don't want to waste. It can be used in other, you know, in other departments for whatever you have planned for it. So, we're very fiscally responsible. Over the next three to five years, you're going to see somewhat, if you saw the sheriff's five-year phasing plan for the South County, we are going to add some positions, if you've seen. But, with what we've done, with the creativity of using and closing down Main Jail, it's significantly less than initially outlined. And we're streamlining our operations regularly. Anytime we can come up with a streamline to do it cheaper, do it faster, do it better, we do it. The sheriff is commonly doing more with less, and he's pushing us to. But, there comes a point where we can't overanalyze ourselves and let the community and the public and all that outgrow us. At some point, we have to keep up with it. Consolidation of resources, when we go to the Acres complex, that's going to be a savings. Why? Because we're bringing all, everybody into one location. We're pulling out of our lease on Doe, moving them into Burl. So, we're consolidating, streamlining operations, again, touching on our egg operation, as well as our garden operation. The position's definitely needed, and it's needed immediately. Go ahead, the next one. These are just some of the things that we've gone over with you guys, showing you the, you know, where we're at. I mean, we are, the sheriff, his vision is to be the best law enforcement agency in this country, and he wasn't kidding. We're moving in that direction, and sometimes, we've got to catch up with him. But, one thing that sheriff's offices don't commonly do is become revenue generators. Well, he's already thinking like that. How? Our driving simulators, our shooting simulators, we can do, you know, we're looking at, in the future, doing a regional range where we bring everybody into us, a regional crime lab. Everybody pays us, comes to us, to generate that little extra revenue. He's toying with the dairy operation, which can be a revenue generator. But, all these things, if you just look at it, this is a snapshot, this drone program, nobody is doing that. We sent a guy back to DC for the FAA class. They go, nobody's as far advanced as you guys are on this drone for law enforcement. You guys have already been through the schools. You've done this. So, they're wanting our guy to be their rep, basically, for how law enforcement does it in California. Because we're going after, we're trying to be the best with what we have. Kurt, oh, that's yours.
Okay, so, we've identified, obviously, we have a fiduciary responsibility, and we want to make sure that we articulate to you that we definitely do take this very seriously. So, April through June is absorbed through the salary savings and the vacancy that we've had since December of 2016, when Assistant Sheriff Log retired. That covers it to the end of this fiscal year. From July to September, prior to the final 1718 budget being adopted, we will have salary savings that will cover that cost by anticipated vacancies. We're in constant recruitment for our positions, but we will have those vacancies, and we will be able to cover that. We will be requesting the position be fully funded in the budget cycle for 2017. and seventeen-eighteen. Our operation budgets and growth, just a real quick snapshot, I'll just cover it real briefly, two thousand and seven to seventeen. In two thousand and seven, we had sixty-eight-point-two-million-dollar budget, this year, one-hundred-and-two-million dollars, ten years difference. Six-hundred-and-eighty-six staff in two thousand and seven, eight-hundred-and-sixty-nine staff now. County population, four-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand versus four-fifty-six. But what this snapshot doesn't show, it does not show our population during our harvesting times, our migrant populations and stuff, and we all know that that spikes up higher than what this particularly says. Look at our grants, that we're constantly looking for grants. Sheriff is always looking for ways of offsetting costs. We've over-doubled our grant awards in ten years, and the revenues that we brought in have over-doubled as well. And again, just touching base on what some of the things we've done, we've got the North County Facility, property and evidence building, the new aviation, our dispatch relocation using existing space, CFIU remodel relocation, and the South County Detention Facility construction project.
This just touches on some of the things we've done since Sheriff Boudreaux's taken over. The lakes, the boat enforcement, we've completed our gang injunction, we've implemented, he's implemented the CAT unit, and obviously, I need these because I can't see it. Our AGNA Task Force, Operation Red Soul, we're a primary partner in. The big one right now, we're in the fifth phase of Operation Babyface. That has been huge as far as the community, this child internet safety. Enhanced management of mental health inmates. You see what we're doing out at pre-trial? That's risk management right there. But what we need to incorporate is the oversight for the two different sides. As you see there, that's the picture of when we did the active shooter drill at the courthouse. These are something that isn't common within the jails in California, is having canines, which they basically sniff out tobacco, cell phones, another contraband. Just a snippet from Operation Babyface. You know, the big thing he pushes is transparency, how have we done, how have we done that? Well, I've given you several examples of how we've done it, with the groups we meet with, the social media we use, our public information officer. One thing we didn't touch on is our community, or I'm sorry, our continual improvement team. What that is, is that is every rank, sworn, non-sworn, civilian, within the agency forms this CIT committee. What do they do? They bring ideas forward. How can we do things better? How can we do things more efficient? If you guys got ideas, this committee brings them. It's overseen by a captain, it's presented, the CIT presents it up, the chain to the administration, and we make a determination on it. Another thing is the sheriff's public outreach team. Public members from all over different parts of the county. Come in, they meet four to six times a year. What's, what's the pulse in the community? What is going on? What is their feeling on how we're doing? What can we change? What can we do better? And they bring these ideas on this SPOT team to the sheriff's office, and we've implemented it. One of the, one of the things they talked about was, I'll never forget this one, she was driving down one-ninety-eight, sees the sheriff behind her with the lights and siren on, wondering, why don't he just pass me? She has no idea he's pulling her over. Why? That's California Highway Patrols. It's not the sheriff's, they don't do highways. People actually don't know that, which sparked our video, one of our videos. If you see it on Facebook, go ahead.
So in summary, we have a hundred-and-two-million-dollar budget, our span of control, the sheriff has analyzed this greatly, at great lengths, for a long period of time. This is something that he needs and he desires. There is no immediate cost to the county. It helps to bring the sheriff's office into the twenty-first century in staffing trends. It's a clear chain of command. It streams like, streamlines effectiveness, it's more efficient and effective.
This is the delineation between the two. Assistant sheriff is a senior executive of the department who commands and is responsible for the activities of his or her concerned division, as well as any other specialized program assigned by the sheriff and undersheriff. Assistant sheriff participates in the planning for the expansion, reorganization of operations within their assigned areas to meet growing or changing law enforcement, custodial or service needs. The undersheriff is the second command of the agency and assumes the duties of the sheriff in his absence. The undersheriff provides advice on administrative issues, which include department direction, legislative and operational concerns, and budgetary and personnel matters. The undersheriff ensures the oversight responsibility of the assistant sheriffs for the efficient administration of divisions and specialized units or programs. That's what we talk about, our span of control. This is what our goal is. It evens out everything within the agency, there's a clear line of chain of command going up, a clear line coming down. Go to the next one. And you'll see a side-by-side of where we're at and where we want to be. So with that, we'll close, we'll invite the sheriff up. Thank you.
I promise I'll-
You don't seem like such a stranger, we've seen a lot of pictures of you throughout that presentation, just wanted to say that.
Yeah, well, it's important, it's important that you see me. We had a few of you, and we chose not to put them up, because we were going to be looking directly at you. I promise I won't take more than forty-five minutes. So, to our CAO, Mr. Chairman, thank you for having us here, to members of the board, and to our county council. I want to first start off by saying, the reason that we gave you the presentation as to what we're doing today is, a lot of what happens within our internal working sometimes gets missed. You look on the outside looking in, and you think, boy, what do they do? You dial nine-one-one, and a police officer comes, deputy sheriff comes, but that's really the scope of our understanding. Now, I understand the board is a little bit different, and you do understand what's happening with our agency, but we're making magnificent changes. We're moving into the twenty-first century. We do not want to rest on how we've done things always in the past. I've heard the, let's do more with less. As you have seen, we have done more with less. We've combined units, we've taken where we could, and we've made things better with how we're doing things, more efficiently and more prudent, fiscally responsible. My fear and concern becomes that we can often be putting ourselves into a position of doing less and getting less. It's important that we analyze what we're doing now. I've thought of this project over the last two years, and I have thoroughly analyzed it. I've taken a look at other agencies through the state of California, and what they didn't show you, they showed some internal and some external. There's eleven other agencies running with an undersheriff and two assistant sheriffs, and many, many more, because the importance of accountability through administrative oversight. That's what I'm requesting here. In a recent ad hoc meeting, Mr. Van Poel, you even spoke about being proactive, to keep from being reactive. I believe in that, and I think that was a profound, great statement for us in the county. I don't want to go into the next budget cycle wishing we had been proactive. I believe as we move forward with the many projects that we're doing, we'll become reactive, playing catch-up. I don't want to put ourselves in that position. Mr. Spotta talked about enhancing our public safety. I agree with that, too. I think that we have put ourselves as a county and the department as a sheriff, I anticipate within the next two to three years, we will be a thousand-man department. That's huge. I'm proud of the department. Adding this position, we would cover several key elements within our strategic management. Those include organizational mission and goals. Part of that is successful and effective succession planning. We are constantly working on our succession planning. We had over seventy-five people leave the department this year, some in retirement, some in medical, some moving on to different agencies. But we've added over eighty people, so we've balanced. But moving people into supervision, management, et cetera, becomes an important part of what we do. Delivery of timely, cost-effective, and measurable results. That's what this second assistant sheriff will be required to do. Emphasis on prudent fiscal management. As you know, I pay attention to our budget, I work within our budget. The board and our CAO is very kind in focusing on public safety. The evaluation of plans and programs and projects, I have to tell you, I have captains doing assistant sheriff's jobs. The amount of infrastructure and planning and space planning that we're moving into as far as the sheriff's office is concerned, you saw it. And I will, and I have been one of those guys who continually asks for more, and I'll tell you, because our department is so far in the past, we can't afford not to be asking for more. Pixley Substation was made out of bricks of hay. If I hadn't have brought that to the attention of the board, we would spend another ten to fifteen years wondering, how come we didn't ask that question? Why didn't we replace Pixley Substation? It has bricks of hay. The same be true when I come to you and continually ask for new things. I want to make sure that we're not wishing we had been proactive. The need and urgency is now. I've heard, why now? Now's more important than ever with the projects that are happening. If I wait until the beginning of the next budget cycle, we will be reactive, not proactive. We have things happening now. The analysis is clear. We've taken a clear look at what the need and projective needs are for the future of this agency. Sustainability, I think that I've proven since I've been put in this position, that we are fiscally responsible, and the sustainability of being able to afford this, even within our current budget, we can make it happen. I want to be transparent, that's why I'm here today. The presentation is lengthy, but I want you to know everything. And to be quite frank, we left out another hour of stuff. We removed slides. You're welcome. But we're a twenty-first-century agency, and we are moving forward to be efficient with new technology innovations, but there has to be an accountable administrative oversight position. We have one, I need to fill another because of the size and scale. Again, I believe in running the sheriff's office like a business. You have to have executives within that business that understand the business, that have administrative oversight. We've grown to the point that requires that second position. And I'll continue to be looking at generating revenue. I have many, many ideas, and I think that we can become a county, an agency that works together, an office of the sheriff along with our county and our board of supervisors, that we can become a revenue-generating law enforcement agency that'll help offset that cost, with many other ideas that I have in place that we have, that I look forward to speaking with you in the future. But with that, I would open it up for any concerns and questions that you have, that which I can't answer, I have the two captains who surgically went through this. I know that the approval of this position would really make the undersheriff very happy. He has three captains reporting to him and an assistant sheriff. It would be two assistant sheriffs reporting to him, as you saw within the slides. So with that, I surely appreciate your time. I appreciate the board and any decision that you make, and I would welcome any questions that you may have.
I don't really have a question, just a comment. I appreciate the fact that, I was going to, was going to make the comment about the fact that, as the presentation was given, or the written information we had, was that this was to be no net cost to the county, but I appreciate that, because we're talking about the current fiscal year going forward, where there will be an additional cost, because obviously, you're adding another position. So, I just thought that was a good transparent comment to be made, and I appreciate it, because oftentimes, we kind of get the first part and not the second part. But I was, I was about halfway through, I was about ready to say, uncle. I'm convinced, let's go forward.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, the way I look at it, the sheriff is in charge of that department, he knows what his needs are, and he knows what it's going to take to move us forward. So, I'm a hundred percent in favor of it.
Thank you, Mike.
Same here, I am in support. What you say about bringing the office into the twenty-first century is very apparent. I appreciate all the work of everybody, and no, I have not gone through the use-of-force simulator, so-
I will.
I've done it at Fresno PD, but I have not done it here, so... And as far as revenue, more revenue-generating things, you might think about an indoor shooting range that's open to the public.
Yeah, we're already thinking about it.
Really?
We have plans, I can present it next week if you'd like.
Hey, and just so you don't have to put Deputy Busby on the shelf when Sigley's doing these presentations, Supervisor Shuckley actually is very interested in being Deputy Busby.
I'm there, yeah.
Supervisor Crocker.
Crocker taking it on the road.
Hey, are the adversary, I mean-
We can put him in the shadow box.
He might be mad.
Busby in the shadow box.
Go ahead.
I guess, and I shared this with you, Sheriff, before, that I just concur with Supervisor Ennis's comments, that you're the department head, and so I would defer to you as far as what the, what suits you best as far as the operations. But I do have a question. There was a mention of, there's a current position for assistant sheriff that's vacant, so is that currently vacant, and is that in the recruitment process right now?
It is. It's vacant, but as part of watching our fiscal responsibility moving into the next few months, I purposely held that. Many have wondered why I've held that within the department. It's because I wanted to be able to sustain the second position moving forward to where it wasn't impacting not only to you as the board or to us as a department.
So will there be concurrent recruitment, or that recruitment's already taking place for the vacancy?
I have recruited for that. We're ready to move forward within the next week.
Very good.
Okay, my turn. I thought that was a great presentation, very thorough. I know that you and I had spoken about this a while back, and what my recommendation was to you is to analyze it, and you brought forward a very comprehensive and thorough analysis. I agree with my colleagues, you are the department head, this board has been very supportive of law enforcement, and will continue to be supportive of law enforcement. I'm not going to sit here as a civilian and tell you how to be the sheriff, even though we do have budgetary authority, but our job is to empower you, to give you the tools that you need to be successful, and you have taken the department a tremendous, in a tremendous stride forward, going from where it was when you took over, not to say anything disparaging about our former sheriff, Bill Whitman, but to see where it is today, you've done a fantastic job. The department has grown. It is going to be interesting, looking forward to the future, as we continue to see realignments from the state to the local level, and basically, the decriminalization of certain acts in our society. I almost feel like there's pretty soon going to be no need for a jail. They're going to find a reason to get people out of jail at any opportunity that they can. But one key piece of what you're doing up at Sequoia Field that I think is very, very important, is taking the opportunity that you have with those prisoners in custody and helping to rehabilitate them, so that when they do get back onto the street, that they can start from a better position to maybe become a productive member of society. So, anyways, I'm very supportive, Sheriff, I appreciate the thorough presentation, and we'll open it up to public comment at this time, if there's anybody wishing to speak. If not, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Second.
Have a motion from Supervisor Ennis, a second from Supervisor Shuckley, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Sheriff.
Thank you, your board.
And now, you can go buy Robin lunch. Council, do we have need for closed session since open session has now concluded?
Yes, we do. Item A is off calendar, items B and C remain on calendar, but I do not expect any announcements out.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you for attending today's meeting.